Board member Orgul. Board member Woods. Board member Love. Board member McCormick. Board member Avant. Board member Bibbs.
Present.
Board member Cornell.
Here.
Chairman Caldwell.
Here.
You have eight members present although I see board member Woods even though he didn't answer to the roll call. Thank you.
Say it to you.
You have nine members present.
We have a quorum. So now if you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance and also please remain standing You may be seated. The question now is on the approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments?
There should be two.
Well, we know that's bad. Superintendent, do you have an amendment on the agenda?
Here it is. Seven point two.
Let's remove seven point five.
And then I think we're also pulling...
Seven point two.
Seven point two. All right, we'll be pulling seven point two, seven point five. With that, we are now ready to vote on the amended agenda. Ms. Doggett.
Board member Jones.
Aye.
Board member Orgul.
Aye.
Board member Woods.
Aye.
Board member Love.
Aye.
Board member McCormick.
Aye.
Board member Avant.
Aye.
Board member Bibbs.
Aye.
Board member Cornell.
Aye.
Chairman Caldwell.
Aye.
You have nine aye votes.
The agenda's approved as amended. So first will be my report and under my report, again, I'd like to welcome back all the students, parents, teachers, staff, and administration for the start of the 2017-18 school year. And what a wonderful event to have at the start of the year as a school district and staff got a chance to enjoy the solar eclipse yesterday. I love seeing all the pictures from around the district of our students enjoying the afternoon celestial event. We also want to thank Orion Federal Credit Union for their generous donation of 12,000 solar eclipse glasses for our students. Thanks for helping make the day special and unforgettable for our students. If there are any other comments board members might like to meet, I mean make, I'm open for their comments. And board member Cornell.
I just want to remind the administration there'll be another eclipse in seven years. And so actually, all the kids in elementary will be able to do extra, even more work in scientific learning seven years from now.
Twenty twenty-five.
And it's going to go through Carruthersville, Missouri, I'll be close to it.
We'll be recycling glasses.
Next, we'll move on to item six. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members. We obviously want to do these KPIs, but just to update the board on a couple of things. First, we have had a very smooth beginning of school. I think I've visited about thirty schools so far and I'm just so impressed with the level of instruction that really has been happening since day one. So I really just want to give a big congratulations to teachers and principals. And I guess if there are a couple of areas I just want to point out for the board to keep in mind, some of the challenge areas. I think first and most importantly is regarding facilities. The board has probably received calls around HVAC issues. Fortunately, the first couple of weeks it was cool, then it got hot. And I think that Ms. Phelan and her team have had about 150 HVAC requests, I think, just over the last week. So I want it for the sort of board to know and also sort of public to know, I want Ms. Phelan to just briefly discuss how our team is attacking the issues and then how they prioritize HVAC issues and then just give the board an opportunity to discuss because I know you guys have been receiving emails and calls just like we have. Ms. Phelan.
So just to provide a summary, as the superintendent mentioned, we've gotten an inordinate amount of calls over the past two weeks regarding, you know, HVAC issues. And, you know, we are trying to address the issues in terms of priorities. So I kind of would like to just share how we approach prioritization and also kind of try to convey the amount of workload that's coming into the district in regards to these systems predominantly because the aging, you know, the aging network of facilities and the aging systems that we have in terms of chillers and boilers. So just since May, we've had almost 2,500 work orders related to HVAC. In that time, we've closed nearly 1,700 of those. And right now, we have almost 700 open work order related items. And so every day, you know, we have many of our systems are running on automated controls and we're able to look at that, those logs for those systems on a daily basis. So at 6:00 AM, we look at those logs and we're able to prioritize work. But we also have issues being escalated through a principal hotline and also people are able to escalate and ask for help through work order induction. And so we tend to look at those and then we prioritize based on the severity of the situation. So as you can imagine, when a boiler or a chiller down is in the summer, it impacts the whole school. So we try to figure out which issues impact more people or create a safety issue and then we direct our resources in that manner. So we start with, you know, chillers and then we go to large areas of the schools and try to address air handling units and cafeterias, things like that. And we try to focus on pre-K and sped. And then we go to portables. And portables tend to get hotter quicker than classrooms as you can imagine they're standalone units. And so we go down the list. Then we go to elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, and then school office and administration areas, and then finally hallways and non-critical areas. And what that means is, you know, we've got 23 technicians that are servicing all these work orders. So if they have a priority for the day and an urgent issue comes in regarding a chiller, then we have to redirect resources to handle an issue that impacts more children or creates a safety issue. So that's how we're looking at prioritization every day. We also are putting some things in place right now to try to, you know, mitigate, you know, the challenge. You know, we're going to augment our current 23 technicians with an RFP for services around HVAC. We're working on that right now. Technicians will be working overtime. And we also currently leverage energy management, as you're aware, across the district. And, you know, we tend to change the set points so we can save money at night. And there's about 20 systems across the district that, you know, they're just too aged. So when we change set points, you know, the system risk for service failure goes up tremendously. So we're going to change that approach and put service above minimal cost savings. So those are some of the issues that we're trying to do. We're also trying to work with principals to provide fans, temporary fixes, and also move children into areas that may be cool in their buildings so we can try to, you know, make things as comfortable as possible as we're working on the fix. And I think in the long run, as you all are aware, we have a half a billion dollars of deferred maintenance. 150 million of that is HVAC systems. And so I feel that, you know, until we're able to secure more funding for HVAC and deferred maintenance items and address some of our building issues, I think this issue will continue. So I just wanted to provide you with an update in terms of what we're trying to do to mitigate, you know, the discomfort to the students. And I fully recognize that we're getting a lot of issues and everyone, and I'm very concerned about our service and we're trying to put everything in place that we can to address it.
Mr. Orgul.
That, thanks, and we appreciate the... Vibrate, vibrate, the silence. The, you'd have been sent to the principal's office for that. The, appreciate your visits. I know that I'm just one of nine who's probably been calling you.
Yeah.
And on behalf of our students and parents. But I was at one of my schools state that's in my district and I saw, I know we had some outside vendors employed. You've told us all that we have 23 people on staff that fix HVAC issues. And I'm glad to see that y'all have gotten outside vendors. One thing I noticed, and I know we're putting out fires, and that's tough because it's, you know, we're drink, you're drinking out of a fire hose on all this. But the preventive part of it, maintenance, is probably a good thing to look at and I'm sure Superintendent, the board would be willing to do it. What I noticed is like, I know air filters are important to change, but what I noticed, we have those, Mr. Myers, they had a name for those units that are on the wall, the wall packs. What do we call them?
Scubs.
Scubs? Scubs, that sounds like a missile. But the scuff that's on the wall, I believe it gets its fresh air either from the outside or it recirculates the air in the room from the little I know about HVAC. But I noticed that a lot of the units were clogged up at the bottom, which when that's the, meaning there's paper, you're just things that get swept in there because it's a, there's a crevice underneath there. Sometimes the simple solution is to do that and that improves airflow. Otherwise, if it's blocked, like when you don't change a filter, the system has to work harder then it has a tendency to burn out quicker. So something as simple as a vacuum cleaner with our technicians, when they service one, just vacuum it out. I'm not saying it's going to solve problems, but it'll help the units work more efficiently.
Yep.
And that's an inexpensive fix, takes someone five minutes. So I just want to, but I appreciate your efforts. I know that we all have it and I know y'all are working overtime to try to get it fixed. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'll also say just board members, as we just beat our head up against the wall about this, I mean, we still can't get away from the fact that we have a half a billion dollars in deferred maintenance and we just have too many old outdated facilities. I think it's important, board members, for the public to know, I think that although we've been very diligent around closing schools, that we've closed close to 30 over the last five years, we actually have more schools now than we did when we started closing schools. We have about 270 schools. When you think about the schools we operate, our charter schools and the ASD schools, and that's on 130,000 kids. We actually have schools in neighborhoods where there are seven schools, none of the schools have more than 250 kids in them. But then you have to have seven principals and seven administrations. It is just wearing us out. And so when we go to schools and people talk about their facilities are not up to par, they can't get the service they need around HVAC and other things, it's just a function of this half a billion dollar gorilla that we have around our necks. And I've asked Beth to put together really a metrics, a matrix of the buildings that really look at the conditions of the building and a deep dive in terms of what's needed to get the building up to par. And then we're going to be bringing some stuff back for some discussion because, I mean, it's just, we just can't get to the goals that we need to get to if we keep trying to put Band-Aids on everything. And then it would appear to me that if we can figure out a way to get newer facilities and stop throwing money out the bad, it may be a strategy. So just want to give the board a heads up on that. But it's just, they run around town one day after the next because again, some of these HVAC units are 40, 50, 60 years old and it's just not efficient. Next, I want to raise with the board an issue, really with the board and the public too, around student records. The board may have seen a article in the paper yesterday about a letter that the commissioner wrote me around releasing student records to some of our charter partners and the ASD. Well, just for some context, we used to give the ASD all student records as soon as they asked for them. But the board, I'm sure, is acutely aware or remembers that there were numerous parents who came down here and called you guys and emailed you guys about a year and a half ago and said that somehow their kids' records were getting to third parties' hands and people were showing up at their door and knocking on the door, talking to their kids, and they just didn't like it. So we took the position at that point in time that we were not going to give out any records. And I think the board had a great policy around that govern, producing student records. Well, the law changed back in, I think, July 1 and essentially the law says that we have to give directory information or contact information for students if they're zoned to a priority school. But what we've done, board, just so you know, is we got a request, I think, from Green Dot and a couple more folks. And what we've said is that we're taking a pause because even with the new law, FERPA, the federal law, requires us to give parents an opportunity to opt out. And so what has happened is, you know, we started the registration process back in May. This law went into effect in July. We still have kids registering. So what we want to do, and we're going to send it out Thursday, is send something to parents that explains what this means because we've been flooded with phone calls today from people saying, hey, I don't want my records given out. So we have to, certainly in my judgment, but want to hear from the board, err on the side of protecting student family privacy rights. Again, certainly there are legitimate reasons for these student records to be given out and we want to honor the law, but we certainly want to make sure that we do it in a way where we protect our students. And I want to say too, that it's interesting because I had a conversation with the Nashville superintendent on yesterday and I think they're wrestling with this very same issue. And I think Mr. Caldwell just told me and I knew that they were, they voted, I think, seven to one to be very mindful of protecting student privacy interests. So I just want to let you guys know that. I want to make sure I'm lockstep with the board in terms of the approach we want to take. But again, just to clarify what the position we have, we've been working with these people saying, hey, look, we're going to honor the law, but we want to make sure that our parents know what it means to opt out and they understand their rights under FERPA. And we will be sending, with Dr. Ray's help, notices to all the affected parents this week and just really welcome any feedback and conversation from the board on this issue.
I'm going to recognize board member Love because she thinks she hit a light on before. And whoever's next.
Yeah, my first question was related to the facilities. Superintendent, I know that you said there are, I believe, well, in the report it was six schools that are almost 95 years old. Okay. So I don't know about the other board members, but I guess I would like a list of the schools that have that need so as parents begin to call, we'll have something to go by. And maybe, you know, since this is such a huge issue, maybe getting a bi-weekly report, you know, so we can mark things off. And I'm just going to challenge you now to start thinking ahead of what we need to do and make sure that we have a clear plan and process in place because I know that we never want to talk about school closures, but if it means closing two schools because the maintenance number is high in building a new school, you know, I just want to make sure that the conversation is had with the parents beforehand so that they're involved. And as it relates to the student information, I know I did receive a lot of phone calls. And to me, one of the most, I guess concerning ones was when a parent, you know, called me and stated that this man sat at her house when she wasn't there after her son had already stated, my mom isn't here. And he sat at the house and when she came home, he had all of her child's information. And he asked her out on a date. So, and she was very upset with me. So, you know, in turn, I was very upset with you guys. So I think that we do need to make sure that we're protecting our children and their personal, and their personal information because the people who have this information, we don't know their background. We don't know, you know, what they do or what they don't do. So I do support, you know, us making sure that we keep the information confidential and regardless of what the state law says. If the federal law supersedes the state law, then we need to go with the federal law.
Board member Cornell.
I think the idea of sending something home and working directly with the parents is brilliant in a sense because people are amazed when I tell them that I have constituents whose children are now being taught by a Los Angeles corporation. And so if you put in the letter, I'm not, y'all put it what you want, but if you put in the letter that, you know, your kid's names may go to a Los Angeles corporation, a Texas corporation, a New Jersey corporation out of Hackensack or wherever. And then, once it gets there, there's no controlling authority that says we're watching that information. They could be punished, I guess, but everybody knows what happens to this stuff now. It goes out there and gets in a computer and people download it and use it. And, you know, our own Secretary of State wouldn't give the President's commission our voting records even though they were public. But we're being required to give out to people all around the country these student records. So if I were to ask a parent, would you like your child's records to be given to a LA corporation in case they want to use it? I'm sure that parent would say no.
Board member Bibbs.
Thank you, Chair. Superintendent, so I think number one regarding, thank you for the facilities update, Chief Phelan, just because I have been one of those people calling you and worrying you around some HVAC systems. So thank you for just letting us know where we are. I think it's really important for us to have a real idea of what that looks like. I think it's clear for us to be able to tell the public around, just reiterate the fact of what our costs are regarding where we are having the old buildings and what just capital improvements, dollars, look like. Just as well to remind the county commissioner what that looks like as well because it's not just on us, it's on them as well about how we figure out how to have the best buildings for our citizens. As far as the student information is concerned, I received a lot of phone calls from parents, some people in schools, as well as just in general walking around and seeing. I happened to actually walk and I saw someone who had a clipboard that had student information on it. And my main concern was social security numbers were on there. Now, it's one thing to have a child's name and the parent or, and the address, but it's another thing to have a social security number and that just be out here in the general public around, you know, just we don't know who it goes to. And I think that's really important around us protecting our families. I definitely support the opt-in and opt-out and us being real clear with parents of what that looks like because as a parent, you make the decision around what your school choice is and you most certainly can make a decision around who you want to have your information.
That would be your second time. Board member Avant is speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent, I, as you can imagine, for some of the schools that are requesting the information, there are quite a few schools in my district that have voiced their opinion quite loudly about why they would not want that information released. So I would just like to know the plan to inform parents. Is that something that we're sending in a robocall or we're sending it in a letter? Are there multiple forms of communication so parents have an understanding of how to opt in or out?
So Dr. Ray and I have been talking about it. I think what we'll probably do can save that, see, what, like, right now when kids register, there's just a general statement that says, do you want to opt out in FERPA? Nobody knows what that means. So indeed, the records request is really related to kids who are zoned to priority schools if I'm not correct. So what we're going to do is, working specifically with those schools and those principals, send something out that explains, you know, that, you know, you have your educational records entitled to privacy, but they've been requested and just explain it and then give them a chance. Now, if they opt out or they don't respond, I think that's one thing, but I know there are a lot of parents, and I think we had about 60 calls today, who are very adamant about, you know, having, at least having an opportunity.
Yeah, I hate the adamant phone calls as well.
Yeah, to not have to turn those records over.
I just want to make sure that the communication plan is pretty clear and explicit for parents to understand what they are signing opting in or out to. And that there's multiple ways that we're sending that communication, whether or not it's a phone call to let them know, please check your email, or we're sending an email, whatever those things are, please make sure that you read the letter that will be sent home on Thursday, that there's multiple ways that we're communicating that to parents.
And I think we're saying, Mr. Lee, that's why we think using the principals really as the key communicators. And you guys have done enough work with Dr. Ray to know that if he's on it, he's on it. So we'll share what the full plan is, but we'll have something out probably Friday, Monday the latest.
I have two people that want to speak second times. I'd just like to say a couple of things. First of all, I'm not sure that what, that the commissioner's interpretation, I think it was a carefully worded communication to you, that misrepresented what was actually passed. I think that it was, what they said was it was on a need-to-know basis and when kids were being enrolled and it was not to be used for marketing. So I would ask you to get board approval because Nashville approved seven to one. I would ask you to get board approval before you send anything out with parent information on it because I think it's in violation of the FERPA law. Last time I looked, federal government was higher than the state of Tennessee in terms of the priority of laws. So I would appreciate it if you'd do that. And secondly, I would ask that you go back and look at the video when they were discussing it and I think you'll find that that's an accurate interpretation of it. And I can get you a link and then tell you when, what to look at. So with that, I'll go to, board member Cornell was first for the second time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think your, those ideas were, of yours were good. And I'm wondering if the law can be interpreted to say that we can notify them that if they want to opt in, they can respond to us rather than say, well, you've got to respond to us to opt out. You're out unless you ask to be in. If the attorney can kind of look at that. And what is happening is this whole thing's predatory. We give them the names, we give them, if we give them the names and we give them the grades, they go get the best students, they go pull them out of our school, our schools, then our school scores drop and then they drop into the ASD again.
I think one of the requests was even allow student rankings, you know, so they want to know who the top students are for whatever reason. So, I think for all those reasons and considering the federal law, parents have to have, make an informed decision and we will commit to going through the process of getting the opt-in, opt-outs. And before we release anything, we'll come back to the board.
Board member Bibbs.
This is more of a technical question in using School Messenger. Is there a way that it actually will text a statement versus it sending you a text saying click to listen?
Ms. Powers.
Our text messages do only have 140 characters, so we will have to send them a link to something that they can look into, yeah.
We can, I would suggest that we figure out how to text parents because quite honestly, that's an easier way to communicate because when you see it and just capture the message right then and there, you'll respond or decide on an action versus having, because the way it comes, you didn't have to click on it to click through to get the message versus, that's not always the best way to capture people at first glance. So I think that's, whatever we need to do, we may need to figure that out.
We'll do it.
And I would just ask again, we're talking about opting out, opting in, and how to deal with getting information. And I don't think that the state has authorized, has passed a bill that says we have to do that. And if they did, I think it's counter to federal law. So I would ask that you make sure before you move into any further forward, that you come back to the board with a report and analysis or if we have to have an executive session however to get the information from the legal counsel.
We'll do it.
So next, we'll move on to see no more lights, we'll move on to seven one.
In fact, just one more thing, Mr. Caldwell, I just want to notify the board. I think that Ms. Mallor, she has done a great job in terms of really, really reducing the number of vacancies. If you remember, we were at, I think, about 250 about a week and a half before school started. Actually got that number to under 100 and then we had some more resignations. But I want to give Dr. Griffin huge credit. You guys may hear about it because some people may not be excited about it, but what she has asked all of her advisors in the academic department and central office who are licensed to do is, they're going to be in the classroom until we can fill these positions. And obviously, these advisors are some of our top folks, so particularly around science, math, and RLA. So what they're going to do is they're going to pair, if there are subs in class, they're going to pair with the sub and be there all day and make sure they're delivering some quality instruction. So I just want to applaud her. I mean, you guys, you may hear about that because we've heard about that, but we just think we got to be all hands on deck. And if we're going to be the collaborative service center, central office that we're trying to be, then I can't think of another more important route than making sure our classrooms have certified teachers. classrooms have certified teachers.
Next, we'll move on to item 7-1, Christian Brothers University, due in enrollment renewal memorandum of understanding for $147,111.
I think, I think, Ms. Chair, we, the KPIs.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I, yep, my bad. Go ahead.
I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lott.
Are we on? There we go. Good afternoon, and for this month in our KPIs, what we're looking at is our annual communication survey. So that includes community survey data, items that were specific to parents, and then also the number of community and business partnerships for our priority schools. And all of these things relate to Priority Five of Destination 2025 around mobilizing community and family partners. So just a little background on the survey, we've done this annually since, I believe, 2014, and it's, gives us the top line goal for Priority Five around community confidence in the district. So here you can see that we got 4,300 responses, which is the highest we've ever had. About half of those were parents and family members, about a third of them were school-based staff, and then Here you can see how we measure community confidence each year on our annual report, and it's a combination of the questions, respondents' sense of agreement with, I believe the superintendent is on track to improve student achievement, and I believe central office is on track to improve student achievement. So here you can see that we've had a little bit of a bump between last year and this year with those that somewhat or completely agree, so we're at 81% there. The other side of the coin here is about confidence in our school staff. So here you can see the percent of respondents who somewhat or completely agree that our schools are on track to improve student achievement. At the bottom, you'll note too that we also asked parents specifically how they felt about their own child's school and believing that those school staff are on track. So there we had our strongest percent completely agree at 44%. So in the case of our central office and district question, it's about 81%, and then here, we're just under 90% at 87. So on a somewhat related note, we also asked about perception of how Shelby County schools compare to other surrounding districts and school options. So here you can see this broken down by school staff versus, parents and family versus community members. And you can see that school staff and parents are pretty closely aligned on how they feel. So between 20, 23% believe that we have higher-quality schools, about half believe that we have similar-quality schools, and then between 28 and 30% believe we have lower-quality schools. We see that it's skewing a little bit more negative with our community group, and that's about 300 respondents, so it's a small subset of the overall group, but they're more likely to say that they believe we have lower-quality schools. And this is a question that you guys specifically asked that we add this year, and so this is just for those that identified as parent and family members with students in the system. So we've asked, do you intend to re-enroll your child in Shelby County schools next year? And this was something they answered around May and June, so it's intended for the current school year that we're in now. So we had 80% agree that yes, they would, we had 14% say maybe, and then 6% say that they would not. And finally, our, our last KPI for the month is around the number of community and business partnerships with our priority schools. So here you can see that all schools have at least one partnership, and the majority have somewhere between three and seven. Are there any questions so far about these?
Board Member Avan.
Was there a follow-up question to the reason why parents were not re-enrolling their kids into school?
I don't believe so. We do have in the appendix and in the memo some items around the write-in answers that they had around why they voted for, you know, similar quality, higher quality, lower quality. So that might give you some insight, but that's something that we would need to add next time around if needed.
I think so.
Board Member Woods.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. First of all, Superintendent, I had a chance to sit in on a couple committee meetings with Chief Powers, and just wanted to commend the staff for this, this type of survey. I think this is the type of information we want to be gathering. But to Board Member Avan's point, when we start looking at satisfaction surveys around parental engagement, what they think of their schools, if I haven't been exposed to anything else, you'll, you'll see this, that studies show you that parents will continue to show you that they are very satisfied with their schools because they don't have anything to compare it to. So I'm very interested in seeing if we were to ask parents first what school they go to. With that dropdown menu, Superintendent, you would be able to see which of these schools are priority schools, and see what the perception is of those parents versus your parents at your higher-performing schools. What you'll see is your higher-performing schools will likely have a lower satisfaction rate than your lower-performing schools. Why? Because those parents haven't been shown to believe in anything else. And so I think it's important, Superintendent, as we continue to go down this path and getting this type of data, is to be able to quickly decide, what does people at school, ABC, think of their school, and see if it aligns with what the data is showing you of what's actually happening in that, in that, in that school. So for that, I think there's, this is great, but I think it's a, it's a starting point.
Ms. Powers, are you tracking all these?
So I have, if, could you go back to the slide, stakeholders agree that schools are on track to improve student achievement. Okay, so, so what I noticed is that even though it's a net 2% down, you lost eight percentage points from the people that completely agree with you, and they dropped down to somewhat agree. So if you look at that, then that means that there were probably two or three people that actually went to where they don't agree at all. So I, I think it's important how we look at this and interpret this data, because to me, that, that's somewhat, you know, cause for some concern, and it's not really a slight drop. In some ways, it's, it's a much more negative opinion. And then I would ask that you, if there's any way you can gather data, when people say they're going to, 80% of people say they're going to re-enroll their kids, if you, if you can see if that's, how that stacks up with reality, and I'd appreciate to see if that's accurate, or how, or how close it is to reality. And with that, I will see any more questions.
Just making a note of that. So in terms of recommendations, some of the things to call out here, especially as you look into some of those appendices and things that I mentioned, we think, you know, a good strategy here is to continue to communicate the wide variety of school and academic options that we have. You'll see for a lot of parents that believe we have high-quality schools, they'll mention specialized programs, you know, things that are intensive services for students that need them. So they think, you know, having a diversity of those options is really important. Another thing that we need to continue to do is develop effective teachers and school leaders, because you'll see that most groups identify effective teachers and leaders as both one of our biggest strengths and an area for improvement, based on the qualitative data that we've gotten. We think that, you know, using those partnerships that we have, since we have several in all of our priority schools, could be another way to help communicate the strengths and improvements that we've made, highlighting positive news accomplishments to a wider range of schools, and then also highlight how our parent welcome center can help keep parents informed. That's something that wasn't in the slides, but I think it ended up being 91% of respondents said that they felt very somewhat or very informed, that SES did a good job of keeping parents in the loop. So that's fairly high and something that we could continue to improve on. All right. So with that, our KPIs for next month will be teacher performance data. I will go ahead and say that we're still waiting on the state to know for certain when we'll get back growth and achievement data, so we may have to bring some of that back at a later time if it's not here in time. But we will have observation ratings and information on teacher vacancies on the first day of school. One other thing, the super-
Let me just, Jessica just came up. Do we, and it may be in our, it is our position, do we keep track of like, when these surveys are actually filled out?
Do we keep track of when?
Like the timeframe, the window?
Yeah. Yeah, I believe pretty much every year that I can remember, we distributed it around late May to June, and this year we started in May and closed it out on June 30th.
Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Cornell has his light on. When, when will we be asking these questions of parents again, so that we can ask the follow-up question? Will it be in the spring?
The plan is, I know it now, although, you know, we're welcome to recommendations, is to, to keep with a similar timeline, and the reason is that you can more easily compare year over year, kind of the same happenings at the same time, get the same measurement of sentiment.
And next is Board Member Avan.
Mr. Chair, how do we, how are the decisions made about which KPIs are presented at the board meeting or superintendent?
Well, we went, when we were in training, we went over a calendar, and we decided based on when the information was going to be available, and also trying to win it, at what a more important time, like if there was enough data to be collected at that point. But that's my recollection, but I'll defer to the superintendent if he had some other things too.
That's correct, Ms. Ava, I think the board selected, and then we just came up with the calendar.
And I only ask because if there is a way to, or for board members to ask about specific KPIs, is that, could it be added to the calendar based on like contracts or any of those things, or are we just going to, is there just a cycle?
Well, yeah, we have a cycle in the calendar, but I, I think the board would be open to suggestions if you have some, and I would ask that you send to, you know, the superintendent and to Ayesha or somebody, and she can get it out, and we can, you know, certainly, I guess, since we, you know, I, I think it was just, I don't think we took a formal business vote, but I, but just certainly, I would think people would want to include anything that you had a value.
Okay, thank you.
That's all the questions at this point.
Okay. Did you want me to? One other thing the superintendent asked that I give a quick update on is one way that we're supporting the critical focus schools this year. So this is something that my team is specifically responsible for. For, I think this is our fourth year now, we have been doing what's called the STAT, continuous improvement cycle, and we pick different domains each year that require cross-functional support, and also, you know, problems that are adaptive, that it's not a quick fix, that it's something that we need to continually review our performance, make adjustments, figure out how to take action on them as we go. So this just illustrates what that will look like. We will work with the critical focus principals and also their ILDs and some other district support roles this year to monitor how they're performing throughout the year, come together collaboratively, collaboratively, in sessions on about a monthly basis. And during those sessions, we talk about what performance looks like, but more importantly, what will we do next, and what do we think can improve the outcomes that we're seeing for students on that cyclical basis and continue to review throughout the year. So that's just illustrating that at a high level, and then some of the specific things that we'll be looking at with our critical focus schools center around the, the school performance framework. So one of the goals for these schools is that they achieve at least a level-three performance on that, and you'll see some of the different data components that are associated with this, and also the critical focus plans that they've put in place. The other part of it will be 70% building utilization is a goal. So when we get together at those meetings, our team produces memos, kind of like you've seen with KPIs, that explain different data points and trends, and then the groups will work together and kind of share best practices, areas that they're struggling, and sometimes we can also identify areas that we can support at the district level to unblock barriers for them to continue to move forward.
Board Member Love.
So with the critical focus schools, I know several schools, they had different plans, so these different departments, they're collaborating to ensure that the schools have what they need based on their plan.
That's correct. Yeah, the, the main areas of focus here will be around what they've all called out as things that they want to track and monitor, and things that they want to work towards throughout the year. And so we will, you know, have support from our attendance team, from our academics team that will play some key leadership roles to help us move through those. Another one you'll see there is around community engagement, since that was a big focal point for many of the plans.
Okay, and I also know that, I think during one of the trainings, Dr. Griffin stated that for all schools, there would be non-negotiables for principals. So I guess I would like to see what are the non-negotiables for administration, because I know that sometimes the holdup could be at the district level as it relates to certain services. And when we're looking at achieve at least 70% building utilization, for me, I guess I would have a problem with that, being that we authorize charters in certain areas, and the charters, their main focus is to get students. So explain to me how we're holding a principal accountable for 70% building utilization when we authorize charters to get children, and there's no way that we can tell a parent not to go to a school? And I know that we do some type of recruitment in the summer. Are there funds that will continue throughout the year so principals can go and recruit? Where's the marketing strategy? Because I don't see, if we're not doing our work on our end, how are we holding our principals accountable to have 70% of the building utilized?
So I can't, Board Member Love, I can't speak to marketing and support on recruitment, I'll leave that to Dr. Ray and his team. But when we came together on the critical focus schools, there were typically two things that were driving our decision to make someone a critical focus school. One was academic performance, and one was enrollment and building utilization. And so in partnership with the academics team, we said we need to have goals around both of those areas, so that principals see it as part of their, you know, responsibility to drive, you know, more students into those buildings, otherwise it's not going to be sustainable for the district financially.
Okay, but I guess that goes back to, like I stated, you know, with what we do, what we're authorized to do, and if we're not supporting the schools or supporting the, the principal with certain programs, certain resources in the school, why are we putting all of this on the principal? You know, and we don't have to answer that now, but I would love to hear an answer to that, because a lot of times, and I'm not saying this is, I mean, some schools may can do this, but I know there are some schools where that district is saturated with charters, and that's another burden that you're putting on principals, telling them, you have to reach this, reach this 70% building utilization when there may be programs or other opportunities that the schools don't have, because the district may say there's not a strong enough need. So I know when we talk about competition, we have to be more innovative as it relates to making sure that we give parents a reason to choose us over another educational organization.
So I think, Ms. Love, you raise a great point, and it goes back to what we said a minute ago, we have too many schools. I mean, charter schools, district-run schools, period. I mean, so we have oversaturation in Frazier and South Memphis and Whitehaven, pretty much every area, because, you know, schools just pop up. And so I think that what we have to do is, is figure out through the policy standpoint, like, you know, I think we could be more aggressive in terms of approving charters in areas that we, you know, need them. I think we'd be more aggressive in terms of closing, consolidating all schools, whether charter or district-run schools, but I think you, you hit the nail on the head. And what that does is, in addition to having 10 schools, all of them half-full, then you got 10 buildings, probably all of them not up to, up to par. And so I think that's, that's going to be something that I think through the charter advisory committee, just through policy, the board has got to have a deep thought about, like, like, what is the right number of schools? Because you know, if you close 30, but you add 40, you know, then what are you doing? You continue to take the same, it's not like we're getting more kids. We have roughly 130,000 kids we serve. And if you, the number of schools keep doing this, and we operate all the buildings and they're not in good shape, then they're just, it just, they're cannibalizing each other.
And Superintendent, because this is a district initiative, the critical focus schools, I'm going to charge you and your administration to come back with a plan for us of how we begin to address it. I know the board needs to have some realistic conversations too, but I would like to see something from the administration, a realistic plan that will address, you know, some of these schools, so that we can create better opportunities for our kids.
You bet.
Next is Board Member Bibbs, and you have about five seconds left on your first time.
So Board Member Love really has made some statements in which that I was going to ask, but my question now, after hearing the conversation and the answers back and forth is, when we have that 70% number as a part of the KPI, are we being, I'm just going to ask, are we really being fair around that 70% number as a goal to meet?
I think, Ms. Bibbs, that some schools, and we've even seen this now, have been very aggressive with recruiting. And I think that some schools will make it, and I think that some won't, but I think some won't because there just aren't the number of kids in the area. So I think it's just, you know, when we had the critical focus schools, you know, if we go back and say- Um, so I think it's just, you know, when we had the Critical Focus Schools, you know, if we go back and say, what we have been doing was closing schools and cooling schools. We said, we had no idea we were in jeopardy, so we wanted to be clear about, here's what we're gonna be looking at. So I think that when we go through a cycle, you know, I think some of the schools said, we won't help with recruiting. We've given those schools help with recruiting. But at the end of the day, you know, if you've got ten schools in the area where there shouldn't be but three, then everybody's gonna be severely under enrolled.
All right, I, I will just reiterate and just ask that we support then administrations around what that looks like for them? Because I think when you're talking about holding them accountable for seventy percent in such a high number, then it, it may not be, you know, a charter school situation, but it may be a facilities, uh, situation. It may be that, hey, you know, we hadn't had painted our building for the past ten years. So when parents are coming into buildings, they look at all of that. So I think we really have to support, um, principals and administrations around what that looks like for them.
Board Member Woods.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Superintendent, I guess, uh, I wanna be in, uh, in the group that you hear from today that think that, uh, setting a performance measure around any principal, around the number of students that they have year over year should be a metric that you mandate, that is a measure that all principals feel accountable to. I don't care if you're at White Station and you're busting out the scene, or you're in a low-enrolled school. If you're in the grocery store and you see a kid that falls within the age group of the students in your population, you should be turning around and saying, young man, young girl, what school you go to? Because that is how you staff this entire group out here. That is how we pay for OPEP. That is how we continue to, uh, improve our education outcomes is by having students in our school district. So yes, it's not fair. All, all schools aren't currently created equal. And if you're fortunate to be able to lead one of our schools, you should know that you're expected to keep enrollment at where it is. And better yet, to grow that enrollment. I've always thought that one of the, one of the unintended consequences of the merger was when the superintendent had to make the tough decision and this board ultimately had to make the decision around, uh, how we compensate, how we compensate our school leaders. And now, you know, regardless if you had two hundred school, uh, instru, uh, principal or twelve hundred principal, everyone is compensated the same. Now, I got a lot of good friends that are principals. I don't want the takeaway here to be that anyone's overly compensated because they all got tough work. But they all believe that their job is to help recruit for their student population. And so I just think that that should be the takeaway, regardless of what school you're at, that it, your job is to help with enrollment and to have a recruitment strategy. And to, uh, Mr. Leon's point, I'm hoping that he was just showing, uh, a level of deference to Dr. Ray around, you know, recruitment is in his wheelhouse. Because truthfully, everybody on that row there needs to know your recruitment strategy. Everybody needs to be familiar with how you guys go about bringing new kids into the district. And it's not, oh, well, that's his role, because it's everybody's role. It's the role of the board, it's the role of anybody who, from the phone call that comes in and say, I'm interested in SES, to, to the, uh, to contracts being able to get signed in, in, in a timely manner for our vendors. How, how we are perceived in this community, we all play a role in it. So I just wanna make sure, I go on record and state that you all, we all have a role to play in, uh, in bringing new kids into the student population. Uh, which goes to my question around KPIs and performance, around making sure that we track that, not only for our priority schools, but at all schools. What is our growth year over year and, uh, and how are we holding our school leaders accountable for bringing more kids into the district?
Uh, thank you, Board Member Woods, and I gave you a few extra minutes. All right. Board Member Avan, maybe not minutes, thirty seconds at most.
Superintendent, um, I think all of our board members have made some, um, good points about, um, where they are as far as the performance metrics. I do want to reiterate that, um, for every standard we're holding principals accountable, the district has to also be accountable for how they're supporting those schools. Um, you know, a, a prime example is a school in my community that has done a tremendous effort in recruiting. However, the students fall outside of the, um, zone for busing. So they're not able to get those kids because we're not able to provide transportation, but they wanna come to that school. So I think there has to be some deference to the give and take that many of our schools need as far as resources to support what we are holding those principals and administrators and everybody in those buildings accountable for. So I think there has to be an equal amount of accountability on how the district also supports our schools to be able to achieve these goals that we have set before them.
Agreed. I, I don't see any more lights. I don't know if the presentation is through, or you have some more?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Love. So with that, we'll move on to item seven one, Christian Brothers University Dual Enrollment of the Renewal Amendment of Understanding for a hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. For Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board Members. Uh, as the board knows, um, this is with our partnership with CBU and it's for the dual enrollment classes. Do want a flag for the board, another board charge just right before school, you're starting to take a broader look at not just this program, but our other program, Hollis Price. Uh, and, you know, how we think about, um, you know, being involved in these programs. So we're doing that, we'll have some, some thoughts run over in the upcoming months, but this is just simply for, uh, the partnership with CBU and the, uh, college credit.
Seeing no lights, we'll move on to, uh, item seven point three, the original seven of three is seven point two has been pulled. But the State of Tennessee Department of Education Coordinator School Health Grant awarded the amount of four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
That's correct, Ms. Chair, and that's what that is. It's a four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar grant. And I think too, I know that Ms. Love had been asking, I think that Mr. Johnson sent out today a list of all the grants that we received.
I think there must have been a great explanation there. No lights, so we'll move on to seven, seven point four, which is the Southern Regional Education Board Comprehensive Review of CTE Programs in the amount of a hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents.
This is one, Ms. Chair, board, we're very excited about, uh, that the board has, uh, very aggressively charged us a few months ago with really taking a deep look and revamping our CTE programs. What we found is that while we offer a lot of stuff, uh, we don't offer a lot of comprehensive programs nine through twelve that lead to kids being certified and then being able to go out and get a job. So, uh, what we're gonna do is we wanna retain SREB that's done this work throughout the country. And their goal, the mission and the charge is for them to, uh, engage the community, engage the leaders and develop, uh, four to five career pathways so that when a kid starts in the ninth grade, they can finish up with a work certificate. And, oh, we're also, as part of their work, they're gonna be working with some of the business community and aligning our, uh, classes to where the jobs are, where the jobs are likely to be. So they're excited about this work.
Board Member Orgo.
So this is gonna involve a lot of work with the students, finding out what their...
Mostly, Mr. Orgo, some with the, the business community, uh, some with the students and then some with the school-based personnel. But mostly, I think, with the, uh, administration, with the business community.
So, um, I had, I, I had a meeting with someone a couple weeks ago, I needed to get the, the information. I can't remember if I sent this on to you or somebody on your staff. But we've probably been doing these, these kinda surveys the same way for a long time. And, um, so it, it was interesting, I, I did some reading on this and a lot of the, if you asked a child what they wanted to do, they'd say they wanna be an actor, they wanna be a musician, they wanna work in sports. And then when you actually do some analysis with them, testing, likes, dislike, things they can do, it, it comes out totally different. It might say they could be an auto mechanic or, um, an airline pilot or a doctor or a nurse, whatever. So if this is the same way we've been doing stuff, I, I think there's newer ways to do things and we can go ahead and do it. Maybe I'll provide someone on your staff at least look into it, that, that, that there's more analytical ways to do it. And, uh, I remember when I got on the board, we started talking about, we teach the same way we did in like nineteen twenty. I don't remember what that's called, but, um, but always looking for changes. And, uh, if we're gonna come up with the same answers and really not move up, we might find some hidden gems in our students that have an aptitude to do something that they didn't really know they had the aptitude to do. So I just wanna see us spend our money wisely.
Board Member Love.
Superintendent, this survey, uh, it'll, so we're just gonna survey the high schoolers or is this...
I think part of it, I mean, I, I don't want it to, to come across, Ms. Love, like it's just a survey. So we're, essentially what they would do is, you know, we actually started some of this work, I know that Mr. Woods is familiar with it. I think G Mac has started some of this work, but in other words, going out and figuring out where the jobs are. And then aligning our curriculum so the kids, so we're offering stuff that's gonna be useful to lead to work certificates. You know, we've got a lot of, we talked about this before, we've got some woodworking class and some miss class, kinda hodgepodge of different stuff, but no true career pathways. So our expectation is, they say, what are the four or five big areas? We know obviously in Memphis, the medical field, you know, we know probably, you know, computer technology and whatever the two or three are. And then we design our curriculum so that kids can start to learn those skills so that they can come out and be ready for a job. And we think it's really a huge, uh, part of what we're doing around the area of career readiness. We talk about college readiness, but we haven't really put together a real solid program of work around career readiness. So this is, you know, obviously talking to kids to be part of it, but mostly, here's where the jobs are, here the four or five kind of curriculums you need to have to prepare kids for these jobs.
Okay, so, um, when we, okay, so I know we're gonna see what jobs, you know, in the top market. So, I mean, are we gonna have any conversation with our middle schoolers who are going to the ninth grade?
Yeah, I think that part of the work too, what we've learned just in talking to them is that you really should start this to start trying to identify kids in middle school. But right now, what happens is you may be a ninth grader, say, I'll take that business administration class, or I'll take that cutlery class, or I'll take that whatever class. And you might take it and you take another class, but you're not finished in high school with a certificate and ready to work. So I think talking to or preparing, you know, the six, seven, and eight graders for, to get ready. If auto mechanics is one, you know, how do you make sure you identify those folks in sixth, seventh, eighth grade? Get them the support they need so when they get to the ninth grade, they're ready for whatever kind of career pathway they pick.
So we're gonna make sure that all of our CTE programs, um, have the equipment, the teachers...
Absolutely.
And resources, um, before the first day of school.
We think, Ms. Love, it merits a huge investment. If you think about the budget, I think we put three or four million aside for it. But before we just go out, I think to Mr. Orgo's point, just buy a bunch of stuff, stuff we've already been buying. I mean, I want kids to be able to go in and say, all right, we're, we're, this is a strategy aligned from really middle school on out. And I graduate and I got my work certificate, I can go and make eighteen bucks an hour doing something.
Board Member Woods.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Uh, Superintendent, uh, did we evaluate what other, uh, school districts, uh, they may have worked in?
We did.
Could you name a couple just here?
Dr. Min, do you remember, we, we actually, I actually was involved as myself, as Woods, we interviewed about four or five different folks.
Did talk, okay.
Yeah.
Superintendent?
I do remember one, uh, I think they're in their either third or fourth year with Gwinnett County.
Yeah.
But there were, there were many, that just is the one that off the top of my head I remember.
And they had, Mr. Woods, they had some really good references.
And, uh, will they also be helping with human capital needs as well? Uh, as, as it relates to, uh, in, in addition to helping to build out, uh, curriculum and identifying, uh, you know, what are the end-demand occupations? Uh, helping you identify, uh, what does instructional leadership look like for, from a CTE standpoint as opposed to, uh, your traditional instructors?
Yeah, so they got a, a professional development component of that. And, um, um, you know, also to, to, to the extent we're gonna need some, um, maybe help with the state around changing some of the certificate requirements and the licensure requirements to fit the needs, they're gonna do all that.
The only thing I'll close out with Superintendent is that, um, Department of Ed, uh, Tennessee Department of Ed, uh, created a, a component called Pathway Tennessee. So they, uh, they're, uh, going across the state to set up these, uh, intermediaries, uh, where, uh, I know, uh, SES is already participating in that also as far as, uh, building out these regional career pathway plans. Uh, they're partnering with Jobs for the Future, uh, Mr. Min, if you could look into, uh, that organization. Uh, what they focus on is not just your, uh, you know, what is, what is Memphis good at? But what are the high-paying jobs, uh, that lead to, you know, middle and upper income opportunities? And so, uh, they, they will try to steer you away from the, the low-earning positions and focus mainly on the higher-earning positions. I think something that you can already be doing Superintendent is doing inventory on what are the, uh, occupations that we're currently training in now? Uh, you know, what are the computer coding programs that we're currently offering in our high schools? And if not, are we already preparing to build out that curriculum? What does it look like, healthcare in the same way? Because you already know what some of this data is gonna already tell you. You know what some of those high-paying jobs are already. And so if we can go ahead and, and start creating some runway on that sooner than later, uh, I think you'll be ahead of the curve there. Thank you.
Board Member Avan.
I think Mr. Woods, um, really was highlighting some of the things that I just wanted to make sure that the contract, um, the vendor works directly with the Department of Ed, our workforce, local workforce board, so that we're making sure that any of the certificates, our students are, you know, that we'll be aligning our curriculum for certificates that lead to those high-growth industries. And I know that some may not be industries that are currently jobs, but there's, you know, been numerous reports by the chamber about the high-growth industries and what jobs will have in twenty twenty. Now, you know, just those five areas that we know are jobs that our kids are gonna need to, they need people to fill those particular industries. So just making sure that all of that will be aligned with the efforts that are already going on, um, pretty rapidly in the state.
Absolutely.
Seeing no more lights, uh, seven point five has been pulled, so we move to seven point six, TriPod Education Partners, Inc., an annual student ser, perception survey, which I know is a favorite of, of Board Member Orgo and Board Member Woods, for two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. This is, uh, as you know, our five percent, I think, of our teachers' evaluation is based on these student surveys. And this is the, um, uh, company that we've used for years to do it. So we asked, I tasked staff to go out and figure out, does the state have something that's less expensive? And they don't have anything that specifically allows us to, uh, measure, uh, student perception of teachers.
Seeing no lights, we'll move on to seven seven, Real Estate Donation, Kansas, uh, CTC.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. This is, uh, as the board, I think all the rest of these items have been discussed in the Facilities Committee recently. Uh, this is, we are, uh, proposing donating to Kansas CTC to the Shelby County Government. In turn, they're gonna donate, uh, about fifteen acres out by Woodstock, uh, for the purposes of, uh, building a new school out there. So this is what this is about.
Seeing no lights, we move on to, uh, seven point eight, which originally was to be removed, but I think there's been some developments. Um, sale of land, capable property, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, we just wanna, the board gave some pretty specific instructions on this and I know that Mr. Moore and his team are, uh, still in the process of getting the contract together. We don't wanna take it out 'cause we think we probably, uh, can get everything on the contract, uh, by, uh, next week. But we talked about this at the Facilities Committee too.
Seeing no lights, we'll move on to seven nine, Surplus and Demolition of Properties.
Yeah, just wanna make sure we clean up the language here, um, Ms. Chair, board members, uh, and what we wanna say. And again, this is around demolition, uh, or surplus and demolition. And it should say, uh, that we recommend the Shelby County Board of Education approve the surplus of the following vacant facilities. Central Nutrition Center, Graves Elementary School, Lincoln Elementary, Raines Haven Elementary, Walker Elementary and Weiss Chapel, and grant the authority to demolish the warehouse portion of the CNC, Lincoln Elementary, Walker and Weiss Chapel.
Seeing no lights, we'll move on to seven ten, which is Emergency Roof Replacement at Georgian Hills Elementary School for a hundred and ninety-one thousand, uh, fifty-six dollars and forty-four cents.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. This, uh, roof was damaged, uh, in the windstorm several weeks ago and, uh, essentially uninhabitable. So we need to make these emergency repairs to the roof at Georgian Hills Elementary.
Seeing no lights, we'll move on to seven eleven, City of Memphis Fees for Use of Radio Tower for Security Officers. Radios in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. We pay a hundred and ten thousand dollars to the City of Memphis, uh, for their radio towers.
Seeing no lights, we'll move to seven twelve, The Morpho Trust USA LLC Fingerprint Criminal Background Check for Employees and Vendors in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. This is exactly what this is for, and I just wanna note for the board, we don't actually pay any money to this company. Essentially what happens is when we do background checks, um, employees and prospective employees, they actually pay it themselves so they can give it to us and we forward it on. So just wanna, uh, note that we didn't really know for sure because of the nature of it, whether they need to come on here. But just out of a bonus of caution, we wanted to make sure we put it on the agenda. we put it on the agenda.
Board Member Cornell?
This, I, I have a question that sort of relates, when, I had a complaint that a person said that when they went down to get their, their badge, when they went to pay for their badge, they, they couldn't use a credit card and they had to have exact change. Is that not...
Does that have anything to do with fingerprinting? Yeah, I guess they would have.
But you'd get your fingerprint in the same room.
But, I'm gonna ask, we talk about things that are on the agenda, and you can find somebody in private to find out about that, please. Moving on to seven, thirteen, Budget Amendment.
For our seven, thirteen, just to kind of hit the highlights in terms of seven thirteen, there are three funds that are being amended, our general fund, our federal fund, and our special revenue fund. Our general fund is something that I'll talk about a little depth, but also relates to the assignment of our fund balance. So, we are increasing our general fund by a net of thirty-three point six million dollars. Primarily, that is carry forward balance of about eight point six million dollars, also the assignment of fund balance. So, we are assigning twelve million dollars, or we're moving twelve million dollars to spend in our budget for the ERP system, which would be half of the assignment, and we're also moving another ten million dollars for the capital projects that the board assigned as well. And then also, there were realignment for education technology, that was a new change in terms of the charter of accounts that the state provided. For, for the special revenue, there's an increase of the budget of about five hundred and ninety-one thousand, and that relates to Medicaid reimbursement program. And then, for federal programs, that budget is increasing by about a little bit under two million dollars, and this is just a, a number of new grants and a number of increases in grants that we've received, from IDEA supplemental grants, from the new grant that we've received related to principal pipeline, to Title X, which I'll talk about later, which relates to, which, which provides supplemental funding for our homeless students, Read to Ready Project Stan, Twenty First Century, and also a supplemental grant for IDEA.
Seeing no lights, we'll move on to seven, fourteen, the final assignment commitments for the two thousand, fiscal year two thousand sixteen, seventeen fund balance.
So, I, I alluded to this as we were talking about the budget amendment, we've had a number of discussions during the finance subcommittee, and I shared with the board that I would bring the total assignment of the fund balance in front of them, and this is what this resolution provides. So, we're requesting approval from the board to reaffirm an initial assignment of twenty-three million for the ERP system, another ten million for capital maintenance, schools and other buildings, another eight point six, which would be the carryover POs, another three point, another three million related to OPEB, another eight million related to legal liabilities, and another three hundred and thirty thousand related to inventory encumbrance as well.
Seeing no lights.
Board Member Orgel?
Ms. Caldwell, answer this. What's our OPEB balance, the balance in our Gatsby trust?
Mr. McCormick serves on that trust board now.
And three million, this three million's gonna go into that as an additional contribution?
Yeah, so, every, every year, the district provides, we provide two million dollars that goes into the trust from what we receive from the other municipalities, and we also contribute three million dollars to that trust as well.
So, we'll make five million?
That's correct.
And this is, this is the three from fund balance?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Seeing no more lights, we're moving on to seven, fifteen, which is Title X McKinney Avento Grant.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, this is another grant, the amount of the grant?
I can, I can speak briefly about this, so, this is Title X, this grant is really to address the needs of our homeless youth. We have about eight hundred and fifty students who are, who get assisted through our homeless program, and the grant total is about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. It primarily funds one homeless specialist, and there's a number of resources that we provide to students, whether it's temporary lodging, or travel, or clothes, or supplies that they need as well.
Seeing no lights, we'll move on to eight, one, the resolution reaffirming the Shelby County Board of Education's commitments to students regardless of immigration status.
Board Member Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board members, I hope that each of you had an opportunity to review this resolution, and I'm asking each of you if you will join me in supporting this resolution. I proposed this because of the many comments that I have received from parents, but also community groups and parents about the concerns that still linger with the parents of the children that we serve. So, I have individually assured members of the schools' commitment, but I, I would want the board to speak as a unit in this commitment, and that's the purpose of this resolution, so I'll entertain any questions that anyone might have.
I have a question, would you accept additional sponsors if every board member wanted to help sponsor this resolution? Okay, I guess...
We can go back and add nine, nine, and maybe ten for the superintendent. We can go back and let it be from all of us, sure.
Okay.
Since you all don't have your own resolution, yes, you can join back.
Well, you know, you're not chair anymore, so you have a good chance to lead again, so. Right, all right. And next item is, depends on what it's about.
About an item like seven ago, no, it was about this one, about the resolution.
Then go right ahead.
The, thanks Theresa for bringing this up. I asked Superintendent this, so, if someone is a child of parents who came to the United States but didn't follow the, the normal immigration process, and they're registered in our school, which I'm sure we have that, and that, this, this addresses that, that we wanna be open to everybody, because we're about educating children. If, how does that work with the state and the BP? Cause most children, I guess, at birth, either you apply for, you're granted a social security number, how does that work?
We still, we still receive full BP funding for all kids who are registered.
That's correct.
Yeah, so even, even regardless of their, of their immigration status.
So, the, so, the law treats them as American citizens, even though some people don't treat them as American citizens? I mean, they're... State law.
Yeah, so they, they certainly, they, the state of Tennessee does not ban or discriminate or prohibit kids from registering in schools if they don't have the proper immigration status.
Gotcha.
I hope you're not giving them any ideas.
If I could say too, just really appreciate Ms. Jones' leadership, because our Hispanic population enrollment is still slightly down more, you know, than so in other places, and as we talk to families, the main concern is people are still afraid. I think that as time goes by, people start to get more, less, or get less afraid, but I think this strong stance by the board just reaffirms, I think that Latino Memphis sent out something today, you know, fully supporting the resolution, so I think it's a wonderful thing.
Board Member Woods?
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and I understand we have a meeting at seven, but I too wanna just thank Board Member Love, I'm sorry, Board Member Jones for this resolution, and we'll speak more about it next week, but to your point Superintendent Hobson, the work of Latino Memphis advocating for this population, and particularly the DACA population and the renewal of DACA, says that, you know, we're already investing in these kids from a K-12 standpoint, the opportunity for them to be able to get a college education from a workforce standpoint is critical to us as well. There, we were one vote short as part of our state legislation last year, I do think it should be part of our legislative agenda to support the, pretty much the Dream Act here, that allows our students to not only have a K-12 education, but to be able to go into college after, afterwards also, so I commend Board Member Jones for this resolution, and we're in full support of it.
Board Member Bibbs?
Thank you, Board Member Jones, for the resolution, but I do wanna take this opportunity to let the public know that in, I guess it was academic performance, we talked about this a couple weeks ago, so from that, we are going to go ahead and do those roundtable discussions in working with Latino Memphis, so then that way we can go ahead and figure out how to overcome some of these hurdles. We are working with Chief Powers on getting those dates now, and our goal is to do them within the first or second week of September, so then that way we can tackle maybe some of the fears, so then they, so we can go ahead and be of service to them.
Board Member Cornell?
Do we know if there's anything that, do, do we know if there's an indicator, do we have an indicator that tells us as far as this year or last year, whether or not we have a delay in Hispanic registration or...
So, we're actually looking at that now, Ms. Cornell, I think we'll be able to give you some better information on next Tuesday, just in speaking to some of our schools where they have a heavy Hispanic population, some of the numbers, reliable numbers are down, and so I think the charter numbers that we have are not up, so, you know, it just suggests that kids are just staying home, so, but we'll have better information on that next week.
Board Member Avant?
I just wanna reiterate my full support, thank you for your leadership on this, Board Member Jones.
Board Member Jones?
I just wanted to thank the superintendent and the staff, because I know that even before this resolution, they had strategies and they were actively trying to ensure that parents knew about the school district's commitment to the, to the children we serve, so I know they were out shaking hands and they had a real on the ground game plan about how to ensure parents of our commitment, so I wanna thank you and the staff for all the work you did.
Next is item nine point one, which is adjourned meeting. Seeing no lights, we're adjourned. Starts the next meeting early? Yeah, and the next meeting will start after a brief recess at seven.
I don't know what it means, oh, there's a pin right there, eighteen.
Good, good to see you. Is that it, they don't have it? Would these go in the order that's listed here? Cause we actually want them down after the pin, they're waiting, say that on here. Who can I ask? Okay, and what I'm gonna do is actually... Okay, the pin is out. Hey, already signed you up, hello guys, we're right back there.
Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon, this is a special call meeting of the Shelby County Board of Education.
Hey, hey, good to see you.
We are getting ready to take the roll and start the meeting, please.
What's up, ain't no few yet, I'ma hug her.
Ms. Doggett, will you take the roll, please, so we can start the meeting?
Board Member Jones?
Present.
Board Member Orgel?
I'm gonna ask the crowd to please be quiet, we're trying to take the roll for the meeting, please. Please, we are trying to start the meeting. Ms. Doggett, can you take the roll?
Yes, sir. Board Member Orgel?
Here.
Board Member Woods?
Here.
Board Member Love?
Here.
Board Member McCormick?
Present.
Board Member Avant?
Here.
Board Member Bibbs?
Present.
Board Member Cornell?
Here, and I'm here and I'm sitting down.
Board, Chairman Caldwell?
Here.
You have nine members present.
We have a quorum, and we will, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to approve the amended charter applications, to approve the fiscal year two thousand eighteen capital improvements project, and a capital budget amendment. So, I'd ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. We'll start with a public comment, and I'm going to read the rules for public comment. Tennessee law makes no specific provisions for the participation of the public at meetings of local boards of education, however, board policy provides that not more than thirty minutes of each regular business and special call meeting shall be devoted to public comment. Speakers must state their name, home address, organization he or she is representing, if any, and subject to the presentation before they are permitted to proceed. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs that concern them. Speakers are asked to refrain from using names of personnel or names of persons connected with the school system, particularly when lodging a complaint. Speakers will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive language or vulgar language, and the chairman shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who is disruptive or does not adhere to board rules. The projected timer on the screen to your right and directly behind the wall will turn yellow when you have thirty seconds remaining, and when you hear two, two bells, your time is up. And we have two minutes allotted, because we have fifteen speakers, and we'll start with Sarah Carpenter, then Tom, Tommy Pacello, and Tim Ware.
Good afternoon, my name is Sarah Carpenter, I'm trying to solve our problem for a very um, I live in twenty-one hundred Thurler Avenue in northern Missouri. I came to speak on behalf of Believe Academy, how, wanted the board to know how they've been in the community, working with parents, and at every community function I go to, and I go to a lot of community functions, so, wanted to let y'all know, I think it'll be a great school, I also wanna speak on behalf of Perea, where my grandsons got their academic strength from, they're in the sixth grade now, I had two grandsons at Perea, and that's where they got their academic foundation from, so I just wanna let you all... So I just want to let you all know that. And that's on behalf of the North Memphis community because Klondike is closed. I'm sure you know that. You don't have to ring the bell on. I'm finished.
I think you had a little more time, but anyway. Tommy Pacello, is that correct?
That is correct. Tommy Pacello, the president of the Memphis Medical District Collaborative, 656 Madison Avenue. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm here tonight to just give you a little bit of background about the medical district and some of the things and the growth that's going on there, happening there. Our organization is a community development organization that is tasked with thinking about how do we strengthen the communities that are between and around the eight major anchor institutions that are in the medical district. As you may very well know, we're seeing a lot of growth and activity around the medical district and are looking forward to seeing additional education options coming into that area. One of those projects in particular is the Believe Memphis Academy. I can tell you that the organizers of that school have reached out to us and just wanted to let you know that we think they've done a really great job in reaching out to the community as well and are excited about some of the options that they bring. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Ware. Next, next three is Danny Song and Sarah Carpenter, but I think you just spoke, Renee Smith, and then Scott Morris.
Good evening. Danny Song, 2361 Eastwood Avenue. I'm Danny Song, lead founder and proposed head of school of Believe Memphis Academy. Over the course of this year, while I have benefited greatly from the counsel and wisdom of leaders like Sarah Carpenter and Tommy Pacello and Tim Ware, I must recognize the impact of individuals who sit before me today and also the individuals who sit behind me. Watching this board of committed citizens tackle complex issues with grace, structure, thoughtfulness, and community input, as well as interacting directly with the members of the community, have not only shaped the design of our school at Believe Memphis Academy, it has also convinced me that we are all here for the ultimate same reason, to ensure that all of our children have access to a world-class education. I ask two things of the board tonight. One, I ask that the board follow the recommendation of the Charter School Review Committee to approve the charter application of Believe Memphis Academy so that we might lead and found a high-performing, college-purportory, literacy-focused school beginning in 2018. Secondly, I ask you to hold us accountable to our partnership. We consider ourselves first and foremost a Shelby County Schools' school, serving Shelby County Schools' children. We believe that we can do this more effectively, collaboratively, than we can apart. We believe Memphis has the children and the teachers who can courageously and deliberately change the world. The world that must be changed today is that demography too often determines destiny. The world that must be changed is that an excellent education is absent, particularly in communities of color and inaccessible to low-income families. We believe it can be our children who live in Memphis right now who can be the leaders of that change. Believe Memphis Academy will prepare all scholars in grades four through eight with the academic rigor, robust supports, and leadership development necessary to excel in high school, thrive in college, and lead lives full of opportunity. Thank you for your time. We Believe Memphis.
Thank you. Next, we have Renee Smith, then Scott Morris.
Good evening. My name is Renee Smith. I live at 1135 Noble Street and I'm on, I'm here on behalf of Perea. We respect you and the jobs that you have, but as your constituents come into my office looking for great schools, and yes, we were very upset when Gestalt pulled out of Klondike and left yet another hole in our community. Right next door sits Northside, so there was the first hole. Before coming to the Memphis lift to work, I worked at a daycare, retired last year, thirty-one years. The kids at Perea came in happy and excited all the time. It made me look around to see what Perea had to offer these kids, because when I picked them up, they still were excited and happy. And as I looked around, I saw that the parents was engaged. Every day they had something for the parents, every day. And most of all, I liked the Friday, just when I picked the children up and they had big brown grocery bags of food for the families. And you could tell they were, they were catering to the families because sometimes the bags had diapers in them for the parents, they had babies in their family. I welcome any parents to go into a Perea. And now that's one of the things that schools are missing is that, wait a minute, I never went too far. Okay. They cater to the whole family. That's one of the things that some schools are missing, I'd say. Therefore, I'm asking Shelby County Schools to offer quality education to every child, regardless of the school, if it's six miles away or six feet apart, and then let the parents choose. Again, my name is Renee Smith. I'm director of choice counseling with the Memphis Lift. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Scott Morris, 1692 Lawrence Avenue. I'm the founder and CEO of Church Health. Almost twenty years ago, Church Health began Perea because a North Memphis principal told me that, quote unquote, "The children don't feel well." It's hard to walk away from the children don't feel well. The number one predictor of anybody's health outcome is actually education. Our understanding of health is far more than just the doctor giving you pills and certainly far more than what we oftentimes do with our children. So two years ago, we created a family medicine residency to train young doctors, which everybody in Memphis ought to care about because part of the plan to be in our residency is that you will be engaged in loving Memphis. This is a design that's very different, that will impact a Perea that will grow into a full-blown elementary school with the closing of Klondike. Our goal is for our young doctors to be fully engaged in the school, to become the doctor of families. If mom were to get pregnant again, we will deliver the baby, we will provide the care for that child and that family as they go totally through elementary school. And then ultimately, the most important thing is that the teachers will become part of the team. The teachers become part of the healthcare team. That is a better mousetrap, both medically as well as educationally. We're excited to get started in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Heather Bryant, Molly Crenshaw, and Patricia Byers.
Good evening. My name is Heather Bryant and I am honored to be here tonight from Dallas, Texas, in support of the Perea application for a charter. I'm the Director of Innovation and Impact for Momentous Institute, a ninety-seven-year-old organization dedicated to children achieving their full potential. One of our programs is the Momentous School. Our students are with us from age three through fifth grade, and after they leave us, we track them through middle school and high school in sixty different schools. Ninety-eight percent of our students graduate on time, eighty-two percent enroll in higher education, and of those students, eighty-one percent persist from their, beyond their freshman year. We've recently entered into a four-year partnership with Perea to build a charter school modeled after our successful school, which prioritizes social-emotional health on par with rigorous academics and understands how to meet the needs of children impacted by toxic stress and trauma. We'll use a curriculum we developed in a large urban district, provide coaching for teachers and administrators, and offer professional development, all based on our ninety-seven years of working with children. We will research the effectiveness of this deep collaboration and then share that research out to the larger Memphis community with the hopes of impacting thousands more children. We've carefully chosen Perea as a partner school based on the strength of their administration, their community support, and their vision for large impact beyond their own doors. We believe that approval of their charter could have meaningful impact far beyond what we can currently even imagine, and I sincerely hope you'll consider their, granting their application. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Molly Crenshaw.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Molly Crenshaw. My address, 160 Cherry Road. And I am the clinical social worker, working with the Universal Parenting Place at Perea Preschool. There's five universal parenting places that are in existence in Memphis. Our fifth one's opening this year, but the one at Perea is really focused on, they're all focused on preventing toxic stress in family systems and helping with so, social-emotional learning with children and in a family system so that parents have the tools and the ability to care for their children, knowing what is the best for their kids, knowing how to decrease stress in their home. And the goal of what we're doing is to, with the knowledge that we now have about child development, to really be prevention-focused so that we can address issues before they become problems for families. We have amazing participation at our Perea site. Today, we had ten parents join us for a theater group where they were learning parenting skills, acting out different scenarios that happen in the home and how to, they were learning how to connect with one another so that they can also connect with their children and learn language that helps to calm and soothe them. The social and emotional curriculum that the Momentous Institute is bringing is teaching children how to breathe and relax, to be able to be in the moment and know how to, like, solve problems and prevent crises between, you know, little things that come up in the classroom. But that learning goes out into our city and it helps our community. Learning this when we're three is going to impact how our neighborhoods are grown from there and how people resolve conflict. So our, our goal in the future is to be able to branch into the entire North Memphis community, to be a resource for everyone in that neighborhood. And we're starting with Volantine Elementary next. We're meeting with them to try to get our program at Volantine as well. So I really hope that you will support this charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Byers.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Byers. And Superintendent and board members, we're just glad that you allowed us to be here to voice our opinion about Perea Preschool. I do understand education. I worked for Shelby, Memphis City and Shelby County Schools for twenty-nine years as the building engineer at Raleigh East of High School. So a lot of y'all faces are from me, but I want to talk about Perea. Perea is a good school. Perea is a source of, I got nervous and forgot my words, but Perea is, it's a, like a lifeline. It's a source for parents. I thought I knew everything about parenting. My child, youngest child is thirty-one, so I'm starting over as a parent with a four-year-old. So it's a lot about parenting that's different. Perea provides that they engage the parents as well as the students. There's always something going on and I'm always there. It's like I'm an unpaid employee, but I, I don't care about that. I love the school, I love the challenges, and I love how they teach my grandchild as well as the other children. So that's why my, my grandchild is like she like my child, y'all. That's why my grandchild is there. But the possibility of Perea having an elementary school is right in the neighborhood. I already know the staff, they know her, and it's just a, like a up, I can't, I'm not thinking of the word that I'm thinking, but y'all know where I'm coming from. So it's, it's, it's just like a move up. We, we need that elementary school to keep the education going with these kids. And like someone else said, Klondike is gone, Northside is gone, so we, we need Perea.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sheila Williams, Nikisha Pierce, and Kiwana Watson. And by the way, Ms. Byers, I think you got your point across.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you again for the opportunity to be able to speak on behalf of Perea. My name is Sheila Williams. My address is 3058 Mincy. Perea has impacted the lives of not only my child, but my family, the community that it serves in Klondike and North Memphis area. As we all know, that quality education is not something afforded to lower-income neighborhoods, and Perea provides that. It's such a nugget in the neighborhood that is, welcomes the parents, welcomes the fathers. I've never seen a place where the fathers are so welcome in a place to play a role in the lives of their children that they're already doing, and they're encouraged to continue to do so and in greater ways. The possibility of Perea having K through five, I'm absolutely just, oh my God, head over heels about that, that my child can continue. I wish he can continue K through twelve, but I, you know, right now, tonight, I'll take K through five. I mean, it's, it's so impactful. We have Universal Parenting Place. I was a part of that group this morning where we were able to act out things and play back Memphis and to share with a group of other parents of how, what our struggles are in a safe place and a no judgment zone. I mean, it, it, it does so many different things. There's no other place like it. Not only have Perea impacted me, but the Church Health Center, as you all know, just joining across town, how it's just a pivotal place where people can come and the underserved can be served. And so I ask you all tonight to please, to approve the charter for Perea for K through five, just for the greater good of the community. Because if our children are educated at such a young age, then we know that, you know, eventually poverty can be alleviated and with poverty being alleviated, crime will go down in Memphis, and that's all of our goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nikisha Pierce.
Hello, my name is Nikisha Pierce. I stay at 1022 North Watkins Street and I'm on to speak on behalf of Perea Preschool. I'm a parent of two kids that's now attending Perea, Perea Preschool. I have one child that has problems regulating her emotions and has some type, some problems with her behavior. And Perea, Perea has helped me basically offer classes and other opportunities outside of the school that will help me able to, be able to manage my child when she has tantrums or behavioral problems or any time when she's not able to regulate her emotions. And I apply Perea, Perea on that part because I'm a parent of three kids and my oldest is eighteen. So the things that I'm experiencing with my two youngest ones, I didn't experience with my eighteen-year-old. So with Perea showing me other avenues and ways of how to deal with my kids is awesome. And I think that the charter for the K through five program would be excellent for Perea. On a simple fact, because my child can transition from the preschool to the elementary school with friends that she already knows, as well as with the staff that she has become acquainted with. So I think that the charter would be great for Perea and as well for the community because as a couple of other people has already stated, Northside is closed, Klondike is closed. So it's, it's missing something in the community and Perea is there to help the community, so why not at the elementary school so the kids can be able to, I guess, blossom from being in preschool to other avenues in their life. So I think the charter would be great for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kiwana Watson.
Hello, everyone, my name is Kiwana Watson, my address is ten thirty-five Langton. I have a child who is in the second year of the program at Perea Preschool. And I wanted to first say, the thing that I love, I love a lot of things about Perea, but one of the things that I love most is Perea fosters a sense of good old-fashioned community. When you go into the school, it starts with the staff, and I don't know who trained these people, but they are phenomenal. They know everybody. They know my daughter who goes there, and they know my son who does not, they know my daughter who doesn't go there, they knew me before I knew them all, so I don't know how they do it. But they're out in the hallways, they're not closed up in their offices, they're out in the hallways, and they're active, and they're getting out, you know, and getting to know the parents, and just letting us know how much they care. Also, they have activities, and the activities, I mean, let's face it, if you only have activities that parents don't want to participate in, they're not going to be active. They have activities like zumba, drumming, things that are free, every day, every day there's something that the parents can be active in. So, we're at school together, and the parents are getting to know each other. You know more than that person that you sit next to at a program, or something like that. And so, there's just a sense of community and responsibility to one another. When we're at the school and it's raining, then each of us are making sure that our walkers, our parents that walk with their children have a ride home, and you know, they can get home safely. Or if we're in an activity until it's dark outside, everybody's just taking responsibility for one another. We, people bring donations to the school and stuff like that, and you don't have to worry about people running out the door with as much as they can take, or anything like that. They just make sure that everybody's able to get as much as they need. And you just know, we all know that that's what we need in our communities, and if our children see us doing that now, and taking responsibility for one another, then they'll grow up to do the same thing, and we can have a better Memphis than what we have right now.[721.00][721.00](Applause).
Thank you. And our last two speakers are Natira Carpenter and Alicia Norman, or, I don't, I can't figure out what the last name is.
Hello, my name is Nataria Carpenter. I live at twenty-one hundred Curry, and I'm up talking on behalf of Perea today. My, Perea laid the foundation for my son, which is a sixth grader now at SCS School. They, I was impressed with Perea. My son left Perea Preschool and went to kindergarten, was able to read. And I'm also impressed that after eleven years of my son going to Perea, his teacher from Perea are still keeping in contact with us today. So, Perea, I didn't know who was on me to be more involved, Perea or my mama, and that's why I'm able to do the work better, advocate for children now, because they laid the foundation for parents early. So, if Perea had a middle school, I would transfer my son today, but I am hoping that y'all approve the charter for the K through five.[793.62][793.62](Applause).
Thank you. And our last speaker is Alicia, and it looks like Norner, or Norman? Okay, thank you.
So, my writing is bad, it's Norman. Thank you for allowing us to speak in support of the proposed Perea Elementary School. I'm Alicia Norman, my address is seventy-four eighty Whitwell Cole. We really do appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Perea Preschool and Church Health have built a wonderful working relationship with Shelby County Schools over the last eighteen years. We would very much like to deepen this relationship under the umbrella of Shelby County Schools' authorized charter. If needed, we will request authorization from the State Board, but we want to partner with you, with Shelby County Schools. In a document emailed earlier today, we have highlighted the ways in which our application adequately addresses concerns identified by Shelby County Schools Administration. We do feel that we have sufficiently provided the information that is needed to make a decision, and we're asking that you would approve our application for Perea Elementary School tonight. Perea has provided, has provided high-quality education to more than fifteen-hundred pre-K students, with over eighty-five percent of those students exiting our program at or above kindergarten level, according to the Bracken School Readiness Assessment, which compares students to their peers across the nation, and is considered a very reliable assessment tool of students' abilities. In our application, we have proposed a model that would emphasize academic intelligence, social-emotional intelligence, and interpersonal intelligence, and includes a robust plan for parents to be present, appreciated, and respected throughout our school. We carefully and delicately assess family profiles and circumstances, so that we may provide the necessary support for their success. With the partnership between Universal Parenting Place and Momentus Institute, which is already in place, we support students and their families as they deal with and process the traumatic stress and trauma of being parents, living in poverty, and living in tough neighborhoods on a daily basis. We've already witnessed through the Set Your Glitter curriculum, positive results in two-and-a-half weeks, with three and four-year-olds articulating their understanding of the parts of their brains that helps them to learn, to think, and to remember. They talk about the amazing amygdala, the helpful hippocampus, and the perfect prefrontal cortex. We wish to build upon our successful pre-K model in partnership with the Momentus Institute to create a school that will prepare all students academically, socially, and emotionally for success. We hope that Perea Elementary School would be a resource for other schools in Memphis. We are confident that we have proposed a successful model that will indeed have astounding results. We ask tonight that you approve our charter application, so that we may partner with you at Perea. Thank you.[972.66][972.66](Applause).
Next, we'll move to the first request for action, which is charter school applications, and the responsible party is Brad Leon and Strategy and Performance Management. The following applications are recommended for approval, and it's believed Memphis Academy and Freedom Preparatory, and the following are recommended for denial, three eight one four one Empowerment, Coretta Scott King Middle, Memphis School of Excellence High, Memphis School of Excellence Middle, Perea Elementary School, Pride Academy, School of Professional Development, Rich Ed Academy of Leaders, Star Academy, Supremacy Sports Academy, the Academy All Girls, and Learn for Life, Memphis School of Excellence Elementary, and the gentlemen and ladies of Excellence, last three did not resubmit their applications. I will entertain motions for action. Could you state the motion? Board Member Jones?
Mr. Chair, I move that the recommendation of the superintendent as to the approval and denial, as previously announced, be, I recommend that we approve that recommendation.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Could I ask a point of order? Is that right? Robert rules the order here. Could, could it be, yeah, that supersedes everything. Could that be?
Just, please, let's see if this is legitimate, okay? What was he allowed to do?
He's got point of order on the motion that was made.
Okay.
I think we're just gonna ask about the negatives.
Okay, okay. So, so you can, the Parliament, Terri, says you can ask a point of, a question, a point of order about the motion that was just made.
Is it, on that motion, is it all right to split it into denial and approval? Because that's the way it was kind of presented to us, so I'm asking, is it two motions, or, can you put them all on the same motion, or is it like a slate? I'm just trying to ask.
No. He's asking to divide the question, if they are on separate topics, or different topics, then he can, but simply by asking to do it. Otherwise, he has to move to divide the question into those who approve and those who deny, and he'll take a vote to separate them.
One more. I'm trying to let them finish.
Bottom line was, he can, he can move to divide the question, it will take a second, and it will take a vote.
This will help, I made the motion, I don't have any objection to dividing the question, and having two separate votes, or fifteen, or whatever the desire of the body is. I do think we need a second, though, to discuss it.
Second.
But I'm not opposed to if the motion is to accept an amendment, to have a vote, one on the, two, the two for approval, and one on the denial, or if however their, the desire is to split the vote.
Okay, which you might, I want to, okay, so you got a motion, all right, so, in a second, so.
Yes.
Now, let's look for lights, all right?
The motion is on the approval only.
And the motion is on the approval only, of the two items. Any lights on the approval? First, I see Board Member Jones.
No, I'm on approval, I'm okay.
Okay. Board Member Woods?
Thank you, Ms. Chair, just want to again, on the approval, since we're voting on the approval items only, I would say that I have no questions.
Board Member Orgel, thank you.
I was trying to do something, but.
He just wants to be on TV, he just wants to be on TV. So, Believe Memphis and Freedom Prep, Superintendent, Freedom Prep is affiliated with the current very successful Freedom Prep. Got you. And we want to thank them for their success and taking good care of our children. And I wanted to point out, because Teresa, myself, Kevin, and maybe Shante, but I can't remember, all served with Dr. Jeff Warren, who's back there, and, and I want to thank him, and for bringing his son, who is sitting maybe two down, I wouldn't sit next to him either at board meetings either, so, but thank you for what you're doing, and for your successful application, and we look forward to hearing great things from you, and welcome back to Memphis, and thanks, Jeff, for all your service to the board.
No vote out of that.
Okay, seeing no more lights, we're ready to vote.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
No.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Avant? Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Chairman Caldwell?
Aye.
You have eight aye votes, one no vote.
That motion passes. I'd like to make a motion that we approve Perea Elementary. Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Seeing no lights, we're ready to vote. Oh, it was under.
See the first one I saw, whispering.
Mike Cornell?
Just to see what the situation is here, we have, this is the final revised application, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And so, there is no other thirty days, or forty days, or forty-five days? Okay. If they're approved, they're approved, if they're not approved, then it's gonna be another year.
It would go, they could appeal to the State Board.
Oh, they could, they could appeal to the State, or wait another year, okay, thank you.
I'm gonna just guess, so, since Board Member Avant was the loudest to have, calling you Board Member Avant. Well, I mean, you were emphatic, and I apologized, and that's what I'm trying to make up for it.
So, I had a question about the, the list of those that the Charter Office was recommending for denial, is the rubric included?
Ma'am, you can only ask about the motion that's on the table, and it's not about the denials, it's merely the approval of Perea.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Next, I have Board Member Love.
So, to clarify, we can only talk about the, Perea, that we can talk about. Oh, 'cause I did have an opportunity to visit this school, and Superintendent, I know that one of the biggest things that we're struggling with is making sure that we have high-quality pre-K seats. But I also know that when we talk about expanding a charter, you know, that we'll pull kids from the community. So, I guess I have a question, the students, well, has there been a conversation about the students who are currently in the school, in pre-K? With just, I know that they want to expand, but expand, has there been a conversation with just having those children move into kindergarten? Was there ever a conversation had about that?
I don't think so specifically, Ms. Love. I don't think there's been a conversation about that. And just if I can, just for some context here, and they have a brief presentation on Perea, because I will say, Board Members, that the team felt like this was the closest call that they've ever had. I think that there's a process that's laid out by the State, and I think the Charter Office has done a great job in terms of their training, and having watchful eyes about what to look for in the rubric, and based on the rubric, I think they just slightly missed it. I struggle with this too, because I think Perea does do an outstanding job with the day, with the preschool. I think the relationship with the Church Health Facility, and them providing medical care to all these students was huge. I mean, I know the work that Momentus does in Dallas, but I think that even the way that the process goes, and the application goes, they couldn't necessarily get some credit for some of the things that they do very well, so that's why we struggle. And if I may, Board, if we can just briefly go over those highlights around the Perea application, I think it may just help to inform the Board's decision a little more, so if it, may we do that, if it pleased the Board, just she had a quick presentation.
Well, I would, I would defer to Board Members if they wanted, but I don't know a process to find out, so with that, I'll just move to just pick the next light, and so I think it was Board Member Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, initially, when this came up at a committee meeting, I was against this concept. I thought it only fair to take the time to talk to the individuals involved, to see exactly what services they were offered. So, I met with individuals from the Church Health Center, over at Crosstown, I talked to parents, I visited the school, I talked with Director Norman, I have received numerous, numerous, numerous calls from leaders of the utmost, I guess, standing in the community. But at the end of the day, I'm not persuaded by individuals who may have an agenda, who want to push this forward. I look at the process. We have a process, and by all accounts, it's a not-perfect process, but it has been applied to each member of these organizations in each, in each application. And Perea, you can say that we didn't take into some of the accounts, things they do well, I think that sets a dangerous precedent, because I'm sure these other denials would say the same thing. But the bottom line is, I don't believe in a double standard. I don't care who is behind you. I will not vote for a recommendation that this school board, and through the process, that the staff cannot say that they have met the recommendations of the application process. If they were on the approval list, I would approve it, I would not vote to deny it. But I support the staff's recommendation. I don't think this should be based on who makes a call, and who has a certain, a certain standing in the community. I do believe that Perea presents a high-quality option. I've talked to parents, I've been over there, I have no qualms with how they operate, but I don't believe in a special process for anyone. And if all these other applicants went through the same process, and were judged on the same thing, and they were not approved, and their application did not, was not approved, then I think it sets a dangerous precedent for us to pull one out, for whatever reason. And I've heard Board Members say in the past, I don't delve deep into these education rubrics. I support the recommendation, that's, those are the experts, and that's what they do. So, that's the standard that's been set. As I said, initially, I was going to vote against it, I've since changed my mind. I do think there's an opportunity for these resources to be deployed within the North Memphis community, whether it be Perea, whether it be Voluntine, whether it be Springdale, all communities that I represent. So, to me, it's not just about Perea, it's about the whole community. I express those sentiments to the individuals, all of them that I've met with, so let me be clear, if Perea- If Perea were on the approval list, I would vote to approve. The application was not, was vetted, and it didn't pass. So I can't approve something that the district itself has deemed that should be denied.
Okay, thank you. Next, Board Member Orgul.
The, so, I've read the, one, I want to thank staff, because, and I think our whole charter group that spent two years probably putting together the compact, and I'm sure that the rubric and everything's an outgrowth of it, but no process is perfect. And so, I do, and I stated it when I voted for Freedom Prep a minute ago. We had a successful charter school, they've done great things. They're one of the highest-rated schools in the state, certainly in our community. Perea has been very successful as a preschool. It's got wonderful people behind it, great backing behind it, people that do wonderful things in this community. And many boards that we all sit on and work for, or funded by, and things that we do in the school are funded by a lot of people that are behind Perea. You have no better people in this community, and I see two of them sitting back there. I want to recognize the parents, because I think that's amazing, because their kids have graduated from Perea, they've moved on. And there were at least eight parents that spoke, or seven parents that spoke, that don't have a vested interest anymore, because for most part, they moved on. But nobody serves more people in this community than the Church Health Center. And, and many of you, because, and I think we're that age. I knew Jim Boyd from Bridges, and the wonderful things Jim did with Bridges all the years, and bringing people in this community together. And bringing all the youth in our community together, and teaching them that diversity's a good thing. And you can't meet two finer people, and people of God too, both of those gentlemen are ministers, and they are wonderful people, and do great things in this community. And one of the things that I say, I know that Brad and his staff works very hard to do this, but let's talk about performance record, which is something on the rubric that states, in this case, it says, if applicable, and it says not applicable. But I don't believe that's correct, I think the superintendent spoke to this. It is applicable here, these people have run a successful preschool in our community for many years. I don't know the exact number of years, Brad, but, so, eighteen years, Stevie? So, there is a track record, there's a track record with the funders, there is a track record with the school, and it's a continuation of what they're doing. And, yeah, you missed by a point, I mean, I got into college by two-tenths of a point, and, and I did okay. And so, not everything's perfect in this world. This is a great group of individuals, it includes these wonderful parents, that have come together with great funders, great educators, and are trying to do great things for an area that apparently has some distress. And I am a strong supporter of this application, and I appreciate you making the motion.
Board Member McCormick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was particularly intrigued on this application about the partnership with Momentus, and I don't know if staff can answer, or maybe the young lady here representing Momentus can answer, but what, you know, this commitment and this partnership, how long is that partnership? How long will that be in place? And is there, is there a value that you could put on that partnership?
Mr. Leon? I did, but if they can't answer...
I thought that was a question for the...
Yeah, can you answer that? No, can staff answer that, or?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
How long is the partnership with Momentus, was that in the application? And is there a value that was put, you know, they're making obviously an investment in our system, was there a value put on that investment?
And so, to answer your question, and I just want to be clear, that it was a very strong application, I don't think there's any argument. The areas that were, that we had specific concern had to do with the academic indicators. And so, yes, the application does ask for the operator to speak to partnerships, that they may be enlisting the help of to support the program. I don't have the, I don't have the application in front of me, so I can't speak specifically. I do know that they spoke of that particular partnership. But for the operational capacity of the application, they met standard. So there were no concerns in regards to that section of the application.
Thank you.
And so we do take that into consideration.
So, Board Member Avant?
What were the concerns with the academic indicators that were noted?
Sure, so there were two indicators, in the academic capacity and related to special populations, and school culture and discipline. And in the reviewer feedback, what we provided as feedback was, the application stated that support services will be provided, provided if students need extensive support beyond the capacity of the school does. And what our, what our concern was, and what lacked clarity was, is that they did state that they had a sped coordinator, but it wasn't clear if that coordinator would be providing direct services in the classroom. And in the budget, in year one and two, they did not, they did not specifically budget for a sped coordinator. They did budget for one in years three and five. And so, the concerns we had were the gaps in the teacher coverage that cooperates with the items also outlined in section two-four of the human capital section. And again, there was nothing in the narrative that suggested that the sped coordinator would explicitly be working with the children in the classroom and providing services. And then also in the budget, there was a contingency for two percent, but it wasn't stated if that was specifically towards sped, they just indicated there was a two percent contingency. And we weren't clear as to what that was for. So that was for that particular indicator.
It was for the special ed population coverage for the, in, in the classroom, and then what was the other you mentioned?
Correct, correct.
You were reading off pretty fast.
I apologize. So, our, our concern was that in the, in the application, they did indicate that they would have a sped coordinator. However, there wasn't a description of that particular law, and in the application, we did not see a special education teacher budgeted until year three. So our concern was making sure that it wasn't explicitly stated that the scholars that have special education needs would, would have appropriate services.
And there was a percentage of the population that they identified as special need, or that's just general oversight for all?
I'm sorry, what was your?
Is it a specific portion of the population that is identified for special needs for that community, or is it just overall?
Just for their, just for the, yeah, for the students that they're serving in their building, for the special ed population.
No, I'm sorry, my question was, in identifying a special ed coordinator...
Correct.
Is there a specific number of students that they've already identified are special needs, or you're saying just overall, general, making sure that they're special ed in case there are students who have special needs?
Well, the application asks for the, for the schools to share their plan for, for scholars that they identify with special needs in their building. And so, our concern was that while they did budget for a special ed coordinator, what we were not clear is if that special ed coordinator would be providing specific services to that population, versus if they were just simply going to be in an administrative role.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member Woods?
Thank you. I want to stay on that particular item there for a second. You indicated you were not clear on whether or not that sped coordinator would be providing services to that specific population. Was the question asked after you were not clear? What happens, because I don't know that process, what happens when you're not clear? You don't know to go left or right. Do you assume that is not happening?
Well, when, when we do the amended application, we have to, we have to evaluate based on what's provided. And so, when we do an overall review of the application, we, for example, looked in the human capital section to see perhaps maybe if there was a job description that maybe enlightened us as to what the special ed coordinator was doing. And so, to maybe answer your question, we don't, we don't make phone calls, and we don't vet what the applicant, the processes that we evaluate based on what we received in the amended application.
Right, and, but you, you talked about this rubric in this, this confinement that we're in, but I would hope that we didn't hire robots. I would hope that we hired some people that could just think through this process, and the organization's been doing this work for eighteen years. Are you prohibited from picking up the phone and saying, hey, we're not clear here? And I do understand the precedent that Board Member Jones talked about, obviously, you would then have to do this for eighteen, particularly many other applications, but when you have an application before you, in which you spoke about how strong the application was, when you, when you spoke about it being a point away from approval, are you, are you, are you not allowed to make those type of engagements with, with the applicant?
Well, that's not been our process.
That's not what I asked, though.
That's not been our process, but that's, that's a good question.
What I would, what I would say is that...
Thank you, Brad, please.
What I would say is, yeah, people are exercising judgment, and making the best call that they can. I think that if the board wants to make a motion to change the policy such that we pick up the phone after amended applications, you should do that.
Well, we, we know, we know we have great latitude in what we can and can't do, Mr. Leon, but often these practices and these, and what precedents have been set, come before us in the eleventh hour. So, that's why we're simply asking the questions on what you can and cannot do, not what your practice is. And so, if we could just get an answer to the question that's before us, is that, does the law allow you, if you wanted to? Because we've been in this situation before, cases where someone didn't, you know, didn't bring a check in time, didn't, you know, didn't dot an i, didn't cross a t, and you've indicated, well, the law precludes us from doing anything else. And we've always supported the administration when the law said, here's what we can and can't do. The only question that's before you now is, did you have the latitude to reach out to someone you said that had a proven track record, and someone you said had a strong application? That's all I'm asking, did you have the ability to do so if you had so chosen to?
We chose not to. Whether we could, I mean, would be a debatable point, and whether it'd be defensible based upon what's in statute. I mean, we could have made that choice, we decided not to, that's been our practice, at least since I've been here.
You know, sometime I feel like we're Congress, and you guys work for the Trump administration, we're asking specific questions, Mr. Leon.
And I responded, and I said, we could have chosen to, and we did not.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I still, with my few seconds left, Mr. Caldwell, if I may, I do think Board Chair, I've got a minute, thank you, I do think Board Chair, I'm sorry, Board Member Jones made the strongest point. Superintendent, we don't want to be put in a situation where we're doing things that are unprecedented, that we're going down slippery slopes and having to override an administrative decision. We've always been able to be in a, be in a position to where we've upheld the administrative call on these items, and I've heard you say that this was a close call. But saying that things are just not our practice, or we don't do this, or we don't do that, because we haven't done it before, puts us in these unprecedented situations, where you have great latitude to make these calls, we can avoid having this, this dialogue if you think it's a good provider. The same in which you have the latitude to say, if an organization is not a good provider, that you can then make the call that that organization cannot be a provider for the district. I just think that I would like, well, I would personally like to see you guys exercise more of that latitude to be able to give this board the confidence that we're not just boxed in in a way that says, here's what the rule is, but here's what we thought is best for our kids. Thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
Okay, I think I'm the only one that has spoken on this. So I would first ask a question, Mr. Leon, first you said that the board wanted to retract a policy, and then you said a practice. So are you aware of a policy that says that the specific way you went through this is, can you cite that policy number?
Let me clarify. So we chose, we chose to have a consistent standard for everyone, and not make exceptions to pick up the phone and call folks. If the board wanted to put that in the policy, you know, that's something that we...
In what policy are you talking about?
There's a, there's a board policy regarding charter school application process that lays out step-by-step what the administration should do when evaluating applications.
And it, yes, and, and does it, is it so tight that you, that this Board Member Woods asked you, because I think any policy we put in place is to achieve an objective. And I think we're trying to get high-quality schools. As I looked at your abbreviated summary, they, they met expectations in every category but one, and then it was partially. And then, and the question in this, in the, in the truncated, or the abbreviated thing said it was a question of whether or not there were supports for, I think, education, or were there supports for cultural. And so, we don't have a full copy of, of the application, and I asked about this. So, I, I looked at everything that was provided, and I think the longest thing was fifty-three pages, but it cited other pages. So, so I agree with Board Member Jones that this policy, or this process needs to be tweaked, because if you're going to cite things for denial, then I'd like to see the pages that you're citing, because I was sent information that said there was, there was very specific information about the years when they would do things, how they would incorporate culture, and, and practice with the kids, and give them leadership roles. So, you know, there's a difference if, if, if it's, if it's an oddball application, and it, and it misses the mark on so many things, and agrees just that it misses the marks. So, so, you know, that's why I, I think that they deserve a chance. So with that, I'll give Board Members that have a second, if you want to respond, that's fine.
If, just, I just want to be clear to the board, and I follow the discussion, but I do want to be clear on the record to indicate in any way that we didn't treat everybody the same. I think there are different things that we could have done, maybe we just didn't do, but we did the same thing for everybody, just want to be clear with that.
All right, Board Member Cornell, I think you were the first one.
I, I appreciate the staff and what the staff has done, and I know that this process is going to grow and live over time. I understand why they wanted to make sure their recommendation to us was consistent, but it's also our job to decide if we want to accept it or not. Now, even though Perea, within the box, almost made it, I think that there's some things outside the box that they may do that no other charter will do. So... So I, I appreciate the staff, and I also appreciate people who are thinking outside the box, which may be what we need. And the, the original charter statute was meant to do experimental work in the inner city, and, not experimental exactly, but to do innovative work in the inner city, and see where we can go and, and maybe learn from. And so, I appreciate the staff, but I also appreciate what these people are trying to do.
Board Member Love?
So just a clarifying question. Mr. Leon, you stated that, so you denied based on the state, the state's process as it relates to charters, or as it relates to sped service?
So the state lays out a rubric, and we, that's the rubric that we follow to make recommendation decisions, yes.
Okay, so, based on these charters that you have for denial, have you guys already started, if the board votes in favor of your recommendation, have you guys already started or thought about what the process would be if they go to the state? Because if they go to the state, is the state going to engage you guys, or have you come and speak as to why you denied it?
The state's process is they do a de novo review, which means they start from scratch, and they look at the applications with fresh eyes. They usually come here to do their appeals, and they will have, you know, us speak on the reasons why we had a certain recommendation. They'll also have the applicant speak on, on why they disagree with our decision, and then they'll go back and essentially, against the same state rubric, evaluate the decision.
Okay, and Superintendent, I guess for me, and even for Mr. Leon, but you don't, you don't answer to me, I think that we do need to look at this charter process, which I know I've stated since I've been on the board, so hopefully, this time around, we'll actually start to look at it. Because I think what we're going to have, if the board accepts this recommendation, and if the state approves it, we'll have all of these schools inside Shelby County with no authority, with no supervision. So, and I know that has nothing to do with the motion, Mr. Caldwell, so let me be quiet on that.
Thank you.
You know, but I, like I stated, I do, I did visit the school, they are doing an amazing job as it relates to pre-K in our three-year-olds, but I also have to agree with Board Member Jones as it relates to making sure we're holding everybody to the same standards.
Board Member Jones?
Thank you, I want to clarify something for the record. So I did not say the process needs to be tweaked. I said that I would support the recommendation of the staff, and I don't support one standard for anyone else based on the track of record or anything else, so I want to make that clear, I did not say that. I said I wanted a consistent standard, there appears to have been one. I am going to, instead of beat up on the staff and make allegations to the staff, I'm going to support them... I'm going to support them and thank them for probably what was, based on what I'm hearing around this table, they have received a lot of pushback. And to do something that you're not going to be popular for, I think takes a lot of courage. And so that has been done, I support that. I try to be that person. And again, it's no slight to anyone in a position they may hold. But I don't think you can bootstrap on what I did for a certain group of kids and transition to another group. And we have a standard that's set that others have been denied on. And of all things, the sped commitment and standard. And we just left a meeting talking about how that is below par. And Board Member Cornell saying that they need to come to us. So I guess if we approve this, which I don't report it, but I guess if it's approved, then board members will be monitoring this school. And board members who have in the past said they don't, they'll dive into education will be doing that thing, doing that. Because the staff has said that they don't meet the requirements. And there seems to be some desire to forge forward, I guess based on two things I'm hearing. One, because they've had a great school in the past, which I admit they have. And others, because there are members of the community who hold a certain standard and they do great work, which I don't deny that. But again, I'm a person who has one standard for everyone, regardless of who you are. I think the staff has done and followed the process. I'm going to support their recommendation.
So seeing no more lights. First, if I misspoke about what you said, I apologize. But I'm getting old and so I didn't hear it right. So, but I would say that nothing, I've tried to stand up for what I think is right. I don't think I said anything that was derogatory to staff. And I know it's hard work. I think there are flaws in the general...
You didn't say anything derogatory.
Okay, thank you. But, and I think there are flaws in the process that fall down from the state and the way that the laws have been written. And I've stood up against, you know, instances where it was the popular thing for the powers that be to want something, and I haven't gone with it. So I vote my conscience. And that's why I can sleep at night. And, but I do think that there's, that the administration has a job, and that is to provide us with information. And I believe it's the board's responsibility, or you would be approving the charters instead of us. So it's our responsibility to make a decision about whether or not we want to approve the charter. And I think that's up to the board's decision. And that's, it's a democratic process. And if we have enough people that want to approve it, well, and if they don't, we don't. So, thank you. Seeing no more lights, I think we're ready for a vote. The motion was to approve the charter application for Perea Elementary School.
Board Member Jones?
No.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
No.
Board Member McCormick? Board Member Avant? Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Chairman Caldwell?
Aye.
You have a seven, I vote.
I know you all are happy, but this is, we're trying to conduct business and we have other people that have applications in front of us. So please, please be respectful of that.
I think the motion's already on the floor, I'm sorry.
All right. And so that motion passes. And the charter's been approved. So next, we'll move to the next item of denial.
You need a separate motion.
I need a separate motion for the denials.
Motion.
Second.
All right, but we need to state what the motion is.
Yes, sir. A motion to uphold the administration's recommendation to deny the charters.
Second.
Oh, minus, we took Perea off the list. Right, minus Perea, all right. Board Member Woods, did you want to speak on this? Or is that previous light?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Caldwell. First of all, take again the time to commend the administration for what I think is the great work that they've done here. As a board, we've consistently talked about the high number of charter schools. I'll wait, just a second. The high number of charter schools in our district. And so you can tell the great work that's gone through based on the quality of the applications. Again, Freedom Prep being a charter that's already proven to do great work. And then there's only one new charter school in addition to Perea that this administration have proven. I will take the rest of my time, because at least one board member indicated that comparing our staff to an administration that don't answer questions probably wasn't the most appropriate thing to say. But again, Superintendent, I just want to reiterate the fact of how important it is. Our time is very valuable here. So if we can just answer the questions as quickly and succinctly as possible, it'll make us all feel better. So again, I do apologize if that comment offended any of your employees.
Board Member Love.
It comes to you in the next few seconds. You can still have a chance. But other than that, Ms. Doggett, seeing no lights, we're ready for a vote. Oh, I'm sorry, just a moment. Board Member Bibbs has a comment or question.
It really is just a general statement around. As we, I think Ms. Love said it best, but I do want to put it back on staff's mind around because we're, whatever this vote comes out to be, we do know that a good number of these people are going to go to the state for an appeal. Because that's just the process and that's just what they do. But I think we need to be mindful of what that looks like for us. Because essentially, we're then always putting ourself in this situation of being clear on why we say no and being able to stand strong with the state around, this is the reason why we say no. And I think in the past, we tend to be always on the short end of the stick. So we need to be prepared for what that looks like moving forward.
And if I, Jeff, I could, I think, Ms. Bibbs, I just want to say, I mean, that's why I think it's so important for us to try to stay consistent. And I think we actually have had many, many appeals and have only lost one. And we strongly disagree with that one. So I think those are the points we'll take.
Board Member Love.
Superintendent, I would like to use this opportunity to, once again, push you, to push the innovative, innovation department as it relates to making sure that we're coming up with innovative ideas, you know, that we can put into our schools. Because like Board Member Woods stated at a previous meeting, some of these charter applications, I mean, they're good, you know, based on just the idea of what they want to do. So, you know, I'm personally going to begin that effort and pushing to ensure that, I mean, we need to have something different, you know? Because I haven't seen anything except the I-zone. So, and I've been on the board for three years. So I would like to see other ways that we can educate our children and not let the only time... Oh, okay, well, it's not related. So with this, with these applications, I am going to vote to approve the recommendation for denial. But I would just suggest that we use our brains and come up with ways to educate our children.
I think, Ms. Love, you will start to see some innovative things come to academic play in very soon.
Seeing no more lights, Ms. Doggett, can you take the roll for a vote?
Board Member Jones? Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love? Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Avant?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Chairman Caldwell?
Aye.
You have nine I-votes.
That motion passes. With that, we'll move on to six point two, capital improvement projects, press for action.
Sure, I can speak on the, on six point two. And six point three are somewhat related. There were $54 million of projects that were shared with the facilities subcommittee. And this resolution outlines those projects that were shared with the business operation team, with the board. Six point three is the capital budget amendment that includes those, that includes those 54 projects within the budget by project level. And our goal is to have these approved and also have these approved by our county commission so we can move forward with these urgent deferred maintenance projects.
This is only six point two. Right, this is on six point two. We have a motion and a second, and now we're for a discussion. And I believe Board Member Love has a comment or a quote.
In our facilities meeting, I thought it was a recommendation made to add Egypt Elementary, the windows that were supposed to be, I guess, appropriated in 2013, 2014.
I think, Ms. Love, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Faden, I think we found a way to do that with existing fund balance, capital dollars. So we don't need to get a reapproval for that. But that's, we have the money to do that. And if we can talk, Ms. Faden, about time, because I know Ms. Love and that committee have been patient around that.
Just call me, because it's, I know Chair Caldwell wants to make sure we're only discussing this, so just call me.
I will.
I feel like I'm at home.
It's on the list. It is on the list.
We did it.
It's on the list.
All right, Ms. Doggett, seeing no lights, we're ready for a vote. Could you take the roll?
Chairman Caldwell, while I heard the second, I did not hear the motion.
The motion was to approve...
I'm sorry, who made the motion? Thank you.
Thanks for making sure you're getting this right.
I'm going to have you on the record, sir.
So, are you wanting to speak?
Yeah, I just want to let the board know that the county commission is going to take this up tomorrow. And the chair asked if we could be there, just want to let the board know. Because I think there may be a spirited discussion about this. So if board members can attend tomorrow, I think it's at 8:30, that'd be great.
I think we're ready to vote.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Orgel? Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Avant?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Chairman Caldwell? You have eight I-votes.
That motion passes. And now we move on to the last item on the agenda, and that's six point three capital budget amendment.
So six point three, so six point two was a list of those projects. Six point three is to amend our budget to ensure that we're including the $54 million within our budget with the revised list of capital projects. So the capital budget is actually increasing by 16 million for those projects. And the project lists have been revised to reflect what the board just proved as six point two.
I have a motion from Board Member McCormick to approve this and second by Board Member Love. Seeing no lights, we're ready for a vote.
Board Member Jones? Board Member Woods? Board Member Love? Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Avant?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Chairman Caldwell?
Aye.
You have eight I-votes.
That motion passes. That's the last item on the agenda. We are adjourned. Thank you all.